Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh.
As we go live streaming.
I am really speechless, but I'm so glad I have a mask on so you don't see how red my face is. Thank you. Oh my gosh.
Heidi got what she wanted out of this situation.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
All right, well with that, we can press the reset button for the public participation section. And yeah, Teri.
Great. Well, thank you. Mayor, Council, I am so glad to be here today. The purpose of me being here really is just to express our gratitude for the partnership we have with the city. There's too many people to name, but I'm going to start by naming a few. Starting from the city manager, his team, Economic Vitality's team with Heidi, Dave, their staff, Discover Flagstaff, Streets, it's Parks and Rec. It really is every division at the city has had their hand in being our partners in terms of making downtown really turn into Arizona's Winter Wonderland, both with the events as well as the decor. So it doesn't happen alone, and it doesn't happen without a lot of effort. And so I just wanted to express our appreciation for everybody sort of working together. And, you know, the city has been a great partner, but the business community has already stepped up. We have our property owners who are lighting roof lines. They're helping by adding more lights to trees. Our businesses are decorating windows. So it really is a great example of a true public-private partnership resulting in something wonderful. I also wanted to give you a quick update on the events. You, most of you I saw at Winter Wonderland. It was a great event. We saw a lot of people, about 5,000 came for that event. Many thanks to you for participating and leading the countdown. So thank you all for being there. We have Breakfast with Santa. Three Saturdays, each Saturday has been sold out. We did, for adults, the 12 Bars at Christmas. We had over 115 participants. And with each of these events, what I'm seeing is people wanting to be out and about. They want to be outdoors. They want to be around others. And they want to be in Flagstaff where they feel like they're part of the holidays. So all great things. We do have an event coming up, New Year's Eve. We're doing a third Pine Cone Drop. This is Noon Year's Eve, so a countdown to 12 noon. I'd like to invite you all to come out. It's free, family-friendly, and should be a lot of fun. So you'll see an invite come, but I wanted to be here to personally invite you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. All right, and I see we don't have online participation. We do have one? All right, then we can take that individual now.
Mayor, give us just a quick second.
All right.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me here today. Can you hear me?
Don, give us just a quick second.
Okay, sorry.
Teri, Don, we're having a few little technical difficulties. We're working through here, over here.
Ms. Don Rodriguez, you may go ahead and speak. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me here today. One is a reminder, every road in every neighborhood on the west side along the Rio de Flag has a box bridge. They are there for a reason, while Sunnyside does not have any. Andy mentioned the debris should not travel downstream, and the box bridge at Cedar allows the trimmings from Grand View to flow into Sunnyside. Sunnyside should not have to deal with clippings from another neighborhood. Two, it was stated that unfortunately, the basin at Killip will only benefit residents south of Sixth Street. This is simply not true. The basin can hold the water from having a box bridge at Dorothea. Number three, I am learning so much more than I ever wanted to know about water and laws, and it's not nearly enough. I would appreciate it if someone can contact me to answer my questions. I don't know if the alley was ever listed as a flood zone before now, but it should never have been because for 18 years, my husband cleaned the alley and it never flooded. Before that, any flooding was because the city did not clean the alley of the branches from Linda Vista to Dorothea, and my husband was not around to do it. As to this recent classification, a box bridge, excuse me, as to this recent classification, a box bridge would eliminate the need for it, and is another reason Dorothea needs a box bridge. Number four, focus and planning are mainly on the first three criteria of technical, financial, and legal. The fourth, social, in this disaster, needs to be implemented as well. The disaster in five states from powerful tornadoes over the weekend humbles humans. Flagstaff needs to prepare now for future disasters. Wisdom is gained from books, engaging with others, and from personal experience. In the absence of this, what is left? TV, movies, and social media sites, all of which can be polarizing. It is urgent that the city staff be trained in customer service and what is expected from them on a continual basis because our ethics dull over time. I do not doubt the sincerity of this council, and I am amazed as to your bravery. I would challenge you to challenge your staff to remember that the city serves not only legal residents, but all who come into city limits. Remind the staff that they are public servants, and their thanks and reward is the paycheck they earn every payday. If that reminder comes in the form of semi-yearly evaluations and customer service checks, I hope that you're brave enough to follow through and help us all to be better citizens. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. It is very much appreciated.
Thank you, Don. Is that the only public participant we have virtually? All right. Well, with that, we're down to agenda item number five. This is the Flagstaff Polyem airport parking lot beautification project design. We've now changed back to the winter slides.
Yes, I think it's, uh, the storm tonight. It's gonna be officially winter, yes? So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm your Beautification Arts and Projects Administrator, Jana Weldon. In this work session, items to share the art design that is part of the new parking amenities at the airport. To potentially answer questions or add comments here, either virtually or in person, addition to myself are Patrick Brown, the Purchasing Director, Matt Lumen, Purchasing Manager, Rose Tohe, Coordinator of Indigenous Initiatives, Jennifer Shaver, Creative Specialist for Discover Flagstaff, Heidi Hansen, of course, our Economic Vitality Director, Barney Helmick, the Airport Director, and Kevin Schindler is here from Lowell Observatory at the Historian. So I will go over a little project background, including the procurement process, and I will show you some past projects of the artists that was recommended by the selection panel in B-PAC. And I will discuss the community participation using focus groups. Most of the presentation, though, will cover the art concept itself and the safety reviews that it has undergone. Then I will answer your questions and hopefully start a discussion about some ideas for the opening of this piece, because you will see that the design lends itself to an event with community involvement. Council approved the construction contract for the second parking lot in August of this year. The art and beautification opportunities lay more in the amenities rather than the surface parking lot, such as there was a fence around the lot, there was low walls, there was lighting poles within, there's a bus stop, and then there was this multimodal sidewalk that goes from the second parking lot to the terminal and connects them. And then there's a foots fence that runs adjacent to it. Each of these were explored by the selected artist, but the final design integrates the art into the connecting sidewalk and that adjacent foots fence. Project funding is sourced from BBB revenue. Through an informal request for solicitation and qualifications, the artist was selected for a design services contract. It was first thought because there was this very fast-paced timeline for this parking lot, that we would have the contractor, who was awarded the contract for the lot, hire the artist as a sub. But our added public input process, which is pretty extensive, did not meet that schedule. And so with the we went back to procurement, we had a consultation, and we are now procuring the materials, the fabrication for each of the art pieces separately, and we're keeping the artist on an oversight consulting position. We drew upon the wisdom of a very diverse selection panel to choose the artists. This work was reviewed and accepted by B-PAC. The recommended artist team is a husband and wife team. Pete and Melanie, who used to live in Bisbee, Arizona, oops, looks like I went, no, that's right, okay, sorry, who originally lived in Bisbee, Arizona, but now hail from Eugene, Oregon. I'm showing you some samples of the past work that the selection panel also reviewed. This is a wall sculpture. It's one element of a New Branch Library in Glendale. And you can see the elegant, organic lines and the whimsy on which the artist works. The artist also brought the design to the etched glass and the terrazzo floors at the library. This is the streetcar in Tucson, and you can see that there's almost a Sisyphean whimsy. And here's some proposed block fence and block wall concepts for another city. And in concrete form liners for a project in Texas, the artist delves into even a more cartoon illustrative style. The sense of playfulness, fun, use of flora and fauna, along with experience in fences and walls, are the foremost reasons the selection panel recommended this artist. Staff formed a focus group to be a sounding board for the artist. We drew from nearby residents, tourism, cultural institutions, as well as B-PAC and city staff involved with the airport. Prior to design, we asked the focus group for hidden stories, where people take visitors, and other questions that elicited more creative, open-ended responses for the artists to use. The artists also met with the focus group to discuss their responses. And from this, the artist's team drew on five areas of inspiration for their work: the natural environment and fossil record, lunar legacy, astronomical exploration, the cultural and historic legacy, and then leisure activities and travel. Initially, the artists chose to focus on a wall at the parking lot itself with kind of large, bold images. Our focus group had a lot of positive responses to that, but also guidance, which led to changes. The artist's team consulted with Rose Tohe and her artist husband Steve on appropriate indigenous imagery. They worked closely with the Arizona Historical Museum, and so many in our focus group lent their expertise, like Jennifer Shaver of Discover Flagstaff and Kevin Schindler at Lowell. The artist's team refocused on a new location, the portion of the walkway between the new lot and the terminal. The artist's vision is now a more background lyrical, organic landscape in which you find small hidden gems, small surprising vignettes. It both welcomes visitors and those returning home. The artwork is decorative panels in the fence and bronze medallion plaques in the sidewalk. Here is a typical foots fence. The space between is about four feet high and about 10 feet wide. The art panels will completely replace the rails. Only the posts will be left, and then there will be 28 panels instead placed within. Hence, the project is 280 feet long. The fence is adjacent to the sidewalk and about two and a half feet from it. The fence panels are made of cut 3/16ths each, naturally rusting Corten steel, just like the foots fence are. Here you see the imagery in four sections. The round circles below are the bronze medallion plaques in the sidewalk. They appear by the image they are meant to footnote, and that's why they're called footnotes. The color you see in the renderings is industrial glass. The glass is thick and will be held between steel panels with epoxy and bolts. The artist is showing a sample on another project that he did using a very similar fabrication method. The design concept was reviewed and accepted by the Beautification and Public Art Commission. And this will be an overview tour. There's so many details in this. The note, and also note that even though there's lots in this fence, lots of cultural and historical legacy and things, the artist isn't trying to be comprehensive of all that there is. He has made some kind of eclectic and fun choices. They have intentionally stayed away from established narratives. The vision here is more the unknown vignettes. They hope for a sense of discovery and then venturing on to know more. So we start with a car, maybe someone coming to pick up a returning local or a visitor. We see a local hawk watching and luggage as if on a conveyor belt. The landscape undulates. We see the first footnote. Luggage is picked up. There is corns, beans, squash. We see a hiker and sheep. A spider hauls out a flower to a kayaker. Lowell Observatory walks with its eyes towards Mars. An exotic bird sits next to I heart Pluto. You may very much be asking, what is that scarlet macaw doing there? So hold your thoughts, and we'll explore that in the footnote. Next, the landscape of the Sunset Crater and the Ponderosa Pine Forest. A helpful lumberjack assists some foreign visitors. The arrow indicates that another footnote medallion is in the works here, referencing NAU's mascot. The landscape undulates into space. This sky and spacecape has its own flights of fancy cultural and historical legacy with many footnotes, which, again, we will be getting to just a little bit later. The artwork comes back to earth with an historical Route 66 legacy leading to and from the sacred peaks with rain clouds. Then it travels to the canyons with Membray's pottery iconography as fossils, another thunderstorm, and finally into elk biking and a lost piece of luggage with the dinosaurs. The footnotes illuminate the imagery. They are cast in bronze. They will be set flush with the poured concrete to allow for snow removal and good traction. The artist's team is currently vetting these footnotes with relevant community stakeholders. Rose Tohe is involved. The Arizona Historical Museum is involved. Lowell is involved, amongst others. In some cases, we're reaching out to the individual families who are referenced. I'm going to show you 23 footnotes. My overview of these is to give you this sense of rich tapestry, rather than, you know, reviewing each individually, just kind of trying to give you this, you know, just kind of wonderful thing that's being woven. First up, we have the Three Sisters of Corns, Beans, and Squash, and the Basque. These are our first footnotes. We have Spider Woman and the frying pan cap of Clark Telescope. The role the search for canals on Mars played in the establishment of Lowell Observatory, this coveted trade item in historic indigenous trade. The vetting of this footnote has already, we've gotten some feedback stories of families who had possessions of macaws a few generations back. The Pluto Discovery and the Ponderosa Pine, these are probably some of the most straightforward of the footnotes. A lunar legacy factoid is paired with the role of a constellation in traditional indigenous hunting. The role of the horned toad as the protector of the skyscape and a revelation in flight history. A few more vignettes from astronomical exploration concerning Dr. Harris, and a very interesting conversation with Houston Control and the astronauts. We have dark skies and Edward Beal's camels. And then we have the Hopi and Navajo names for the San Francisco Peaks and an NAU librarian's role in preserving untold stories. The stories of the Green Book Hotels and the Great Migration influx of African-American lumberjacks. An influential Hopi artist who reinvigorated Membray's pottery and indigenous art, and an early influential comic who set his strip in Coconino County. And the Arizonasaurus, and I'm not sure how to pronounce this, Babatiti or Babiti, I'm not quite sure, and other dinos frolic again with that lost piece of luggage. The Coconino Scroll, and that's the artist's title for the piece, is sometimes whimsical and often eclectic. It has familiar landscape elements and lots of creative stories. It is meant to spark imagination and anticipation for Flagstaff and northern Arizona. This design concept went through safety reviews. Again, the fence is about two and a half feet at its closest point from the adjacent sidewalk. Our team first met with Victoria St. Clair, Building Plans Examiner, to review potential code applications. None were found to apply. There were some guardrails, there was building rails, but they actually didn't apply. But the artist's team is following in spirit. They're planning no gaps that could trap fingers or heads if inserted, and they modified already some of the undulations so that the sweep's not low enough to invite people to step through the fence. Like, it dipped, but it, we, he first had it dipping way down, and then we raised it so that it was a little higher and didn't invite that invitation. Next, we met with risk management, and the review focused on the edges and the sharp protrusions at the top of the fence, the things that are sticking out on top. The corn originally didn't have the leaf sweep over the top. We changed that to minimize the protruding tip at Dean's request, and then we also made a model at Dean's request, which I have here. There we go. Here's our piece of corn. Now, this is made of stainless steel and not Corten steel, just because it was what was on hand, but it is the same thickness and it has the same edges. And so we brought this to Dean, and he grabbed it, and he approved it. So, I wanted to bring that to you to show. We hope to install in May or June of 2022. In the belief that this project is very inviting to community participation, I close not only by welcoming your questions, but invite you to brainstorm some ideas for an inclusive event at the airport this summer to celebrate.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Council, do we have any questions or comments about? Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I have the privilege of being the council liaison for the B-PAC Commission, and I've watched this come to fruition. And the commission has worked so hard on this, and it's just lovely to see the presentation and to see it coming to life. I love the medallions. I just have to say that I've lived here since 93, and I learned a lot of information reading that and the presentation. And I look forward to the event this summer. I think this could be a great time to get the community together, and I look forward to brainstorming on that. Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jana, for this great presentation. I learned a lot, too. And I'm, I have a question about that. I see that the medallions are underneath kind of the storyboard, but it's unclear to me whether the text that you shared with us in this presentation, whether that exists somewhere.
The text is actually within the medallion design.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
So it'll, it'll be cast in bronze, and so you can get definition of letters.
Great. So I love it, and I just want to, to echo thanks to B-PAC, what a hard-working commission that is. And I just appreciate seeing all the art that is popping up all over town, and I look forward to seeing this installed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, the last two council members that commented said that they learned a lot, and I think that's wonderful. And there's things in there that I don't understand, I'll admit it. So I have an idea. Maybe we could make a little one-page handout that would be available at the airport for people that wanted to investigate and learn more about the fence and the history of Flagstaff. I'm just thinking of a one-pager. It'd probably be minimal cost, and not too many people would probably pick it up, but the ones that do would really appreciate learning about it. I think kids in particular would, you know, children would particularly be interested. So just an idea. Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I think Heidi Hansen perhaps has even more in mind with a full-color little brochure that will be available at the airport, and we're going to probably be working with Discover Flagstaff on that. So she put forth that idea, and I'm glad to hear that, that you concur that that would be such a wonderful thing to add.
Well, I made the up myself, but I will say to Mr. Clifton, it seems like every time that I make a suggestion to staff to do something good, they're already doing it. Thank you.
Indeed, and we're taking next week off. We got that idea from you also.
Nobody else had that idea. Councilmember Sweet, yeah. Councilmember Schimoni.
Thank you, Mayor, and Jana. Thank you so much. This is a really fun and exciting project. I really enjoyed going through the slides in preparation for today's conversation. And I just think it was a very nice, executed, collaborative approach that you all took and inclusive, and I was so grateful for that. I want to thank Pete, Melanie, for their service to our community. This is going to be a really nice feature of Flagstaff, and it's very exciting. Going to Vice Mayor Daggett's comments about the footnotes and the medallions, when I did zoom in on the medallions, it doesn't, I don't think, include the entire text that is like on the slide adjacent to the medallion. I might be wrong. I had to take a closer look myself, but it seems like the medallion was almost like an abbreviated version of the text. Is that correct?
It's not meant to be. It's meant to all be there, but I guess I didn't read the fine print on every medallion just because of the size and my need for specs, but like on this one, I see it's all there. And again, because the, you know, the outer part of the circumference is larger.
You know, I think you're right. I'm looking closer, too. I think you're right.
Yeah, I think so. And now, there's certain things that, like, we're still vetting, you know, like, we're going to capitalize indigenous. There's, you know, certain things like that that are, you know, like I said, we're still in the vetting process. We've had a lot come back already, but it's not finished yet.
And on that topic of indigenous, I was glad to see that Rose and her husband were included. I do think, if possible in the future, that we also try to work with the Indigenous Commission. I know that there's a lot on that commission's plate, and they meet quarterly, I believe, or every two months.
Yes, they meet quarterly, yes.
So it's a little tricky, but I just know for the sake of diversity and inclusion that, you know, there's many different tribes, and maybe we don't need to speak to each one specifically. one specifically every time, but Hopi and Navajo. So, I guess my question, too, is do we consult with anyone that's Hopi? Do we know?
Through Rose and Steve, we were put in touch, and that's how the Hopi artist got included, but I wasn't directly participating in that. The artist was working directly through our Indigenous Coordinator to make those connections for some other references.
That's great, and I was very glad to see the Hopi features and the medallions along with the Navajo, but very good. My last comment goes to Councilmember McCarthy's comment. Two things, I'm thinking posters, you know, maybe one like by the check-in that kind of like summarizes the art, and then maybe also one in the cafe, you know? And then my other comment, in addition to that one-pager comment, is QR codes, of course, and hopefully staff is ahead of me on this, too, since I keep preaching about it, but maybe not. And what I'm thinking, Jenna and team, is, you know, as you go through this, there could be just a small little QR code as part of the artwork that folks can, in addition to the medallion, simply scan their phones as they're walking by, and then also integrate it into the poster. But Heidi, please tell me you're already on it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, Economic and Vitality Director. So, we're going to be doing a massive advertising and marketing plan for the airport terminal. We've now taken it over. We're no longer using an outside service called Clear Channel. And so, I'm working on putting that together, and I plan to have a space in the airport that talks about the Coconino Scroll, gives them opportunity to pick up information about it. We could have the QR code on that installation, and these are things I'll be doing with the airport budget that will be tying this all in. So, there's going to be a massive way to really not let people miss the fence, right? We don't want them just to come in and come out. We want them to actually interact with it, maybe do some selfies, things like that. So, we'll definitely be having more on that.
And Heidi, quick follow-up. Do you know, at the scroll itself, will we have like a little like, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, some kind of informational piece, either at the beginning or at the end?
I don't believe so because it will be out in the weather. So, we'd rather have it inside the terminal, and they can get the information there.
Very good, thank you. Very exciting.
Good questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Just checking in here. Yeah, well, thank you so much for the presentation. This is going to be really a great addition to the airport, and it's very Flagstaff. I'll just say that. So, thank you so much for your hard work on this and BPAC and everyone else. Oh, Councilmember Aslan.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yeah, let me just finish this up here with my enthusiasm and excitement. I'm really excited about this. I was getting a little teary-eyed checking it out. I love the whimsy. I love the story it tells. I can't wait to go check this out. So, my only other additional comments were, so, in terms of QR codes, I was actually thinking of an augmented reality sort of thing, like the Walk the Talk project that Discovery Flagstaff has done. Maybe something where you can just, as you're walking along this tableau, you know, on your way to the airport or on your way home from the airport, you could follow along on your phone in a virtually, you know, compatible way based on your location along the path. So, just another slight little augmentation or idea to consider to further that interpretive aspect of things. And then finally, I, you know, I don't want to mortally offend anybody if we're already planning some art or if there is already art at the Sheep's Tunnel, but I saw the artist's example of some work they've done for pedestrian cycling tunnels under an underpass, and given the proximity to the airport and what we're, you know, what's in the offing with the hospital if that were to move, and just our partnership with the county on the footstool through there. I wonder if this style and these two artists, their contribution can be continued in that space as well. It's a great spot in need of art, or at least it was last time I was out there, and again, I'm not sure if there's already something in the queue for that, but just something to think about.
Thank you. We'll take it into our work planning sessions.
Councilmember Solis.
So, just expressing gratitude and appreciation of your team with BPAC Commission, and every member of the community who participated in developing and evolving the Coconino Scroll. I am just in awe and in amazement of the learning experiences, experiences that the Coconino Scroll would invite, and, you know, you learn something new every day as a local, as visitors, and as guests, and the Coconino Scroll just delivers that. So, thank you with my grateful heart.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis, and Councilmember Aslan, thank you for all the ideas. I know that with Heidi and Discover Flagstaff, we will be discussing all of them.
Great, thank you, Ms. Holden. We're down to agenda item number six, our federal and state legislative priorities update.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. Myself, Bob Holmes, who's joining us, or there he is on the camera, and Todd Medeska are all here tonight to discuss with you the council's 2022 legislative priorities. So, our discussion this afternoon will begin with a quick overview of how the Intergovernmental Affairs Program works and what you can expect to see in the coming months. I'll then pass it over to Bob to give us an overview of kind of what we're looking at in the federal landscape for 2022, and he'll also go through the draft of federal priorities with you. And then, following the same format, we'll hear from Todd on the state legislative outlook and the state draft priorities. So, to begin, the Intergovernmental Affairs Program is really centered around the priorities that we'll create here tonight. These priorities signal to staff, you know, what you, you as council, what your priorities are and what's important to you, where we should be focusing our time and energy. Ideally, these priorities should also be strategic and focus on where, you know, our state and federal legislators, areas that they're interested in or areas that we think we'll see movement within the legislative sessions coming up. The priorities also allow us to anticipate council's position on a bill. So, for example, if a bill's introduced and it starts moving quickly through the state legislature especially, we'll reference your priorities to see if we think you would likely be in support or opposition to that bill. If a relevant bill's introduced that, you know, the council's position is not quite clear, we'll always come back to you to be sure we know where you stand on that. And then additionally, throughout the legislative session, you'll be receiving regular email updates from both Bob and Todd, so you can stay up to date on current events. And then, lastly, council, as you know, traditionally participates in lobbying trips to both Phoenix and Washington, D.C. Last year, those trips were virtual. This year, we're going to have to see what happens with COVID in the coming months, but we will be reaching out soon in terms of logistics and scheduling those trips. So, they will happen. We're not sure whether it's virtual or not yet, but we'll keep you updated. So, that's just a brief overview of the Intergovernmental Affairs Program that's run out of the Public Affairs Office. And with that, I'll hand it over to Bob Holmes to go through the federal landscape and priorities. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Mayor and Council, Bob Holmes, Nexus Consulting, the city's federal lobbyists. So, thank you for being here. I spent some time with you last week, so a lot of this stuff will be, a lot of it will be review for you, but I want to leave time for questions at the end of this so we can have a further discussion about your priorities. So, with that, we'll go to the next slide. And of course, obviously, for the top priority of the cities, for a number of years, has been Rio the Flag. Obviously, we received the final $52 million for Rio, and we are working with the Army Corps, BNSF, and ADOT to, on various CMAs, construction management agreements, to get the project constructed, and we'll hopefully reach one of those milestones in the next several months. We've had some very good discussions recently with BNSF and the Corps, so we're looking forward to moving that project as expeditiously as possible. In terms of transportation and infrastructure, we had this discussion earlier, well, last week, about the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is the legislation that was shepherded into law by Senator Sinema. It includes a lot of funding that's going to be beneficial to Flagstaff, including funding for, formula funding for Mountain Line, about $20 and a half million, funding for some new bridges and overpasses and highways, and as well as some water, EWPP funding, as well as some Forest Service funding for For Frye and some of the regions around here. There's lots of good funding. We had this discussion, and we can discuss further about some of these priorities. Next slide, please. Obviously, there's about $8 billion in water infrastructure for drinking water and for clean water revolving fund, a lot of it which we can utilize. And there's going to be about $210 million for drinking water, about $79 million for the clean water. There's also money for PFAS, so we'll, again, we discussed this last week, we can discuss in more detail, but there's some really good opportunities in the IIJA, and there will continue to be. And obviously, one of the biggest issues that we've been looking at is World Broadband. I know that's been a priority for you, the mayor, and then the council. There's $65 billion in the IIJA. About $42 and a half billion, billion dollars will go to state block grants to address low-income and underserved populations. About a million, about a billion dollars, rather, will go to middle-mile connectivity, and there's about $14 billion that will create a $30 per month voucher for low-income families to help them pay for internet service. So, there's lots of good things. We should work closely with the Arizona Commerce Authority, Keith Watkins in particular, to kind of utilize some of those dollars to get them up to Northern Arizona. Obviously, the airport has done very well. Yesterday, they just released the formula funds in the IIJA for the Papuleum Airport. We've received a little over $1 million, which is great news. One of the things we'll be doing in our lobbying trip this year, which I imagine will be virtual, we'll be asking for snow removal, for the snow removal equipment building. We received the snow removal equipment last year through our entitlement and discretionary funds, and we'll be asking for more AIP funding for the snow removal equipment building. Finally, I know especially Councilmember McCarthy has been focused on Amtrak, and thank you for always keeping your eye on that ball. You know, last year, due to COVID, we lost daily service to the Southwest Chief. It was restored. One of the things, you know, the president focused on was Amtrak, so there's about $65 billion in Amtrak funding. That will add certainty and reliability, hopefully, to the trains and the Southwest Chief in particular. It will also add more service along the Arizona corridor. Next slide, please. I know Vice Mayor Daggett has been staying on top of me with regards to public housing and affordable housing, and it's a huge issue for the city of Flagstaff. Flagstaff has the third most expensive zip code in Arizona. Only Sedona and Scottsdale have higher housing costs, so affordable housing is critical to attract the workforce and to get people into housing. So, there is money in the Build Back Better Agenda, a bill that may or may not pass. It's passed the House. There was about $150 billion for affordable housing in that bill, and we expect the Senate bill to include similar funding. It's just a dynamic that we don't know and likely will be delayed until next year, but that is something we continue to be focused on. We're also focused, obviously, a lot on immigration reform. There has been some moves afoot to try to include immigration reform, and in particular, DACA, in the Build Back Better Bill. It is uncertain whether the Senate parliamentarian will allow this because it is viewed by some as extraneous to the bill because it doesn't affect budget. So, we'll have to see if that's in there. If it's not, we expect a comprehensive immigration reform bill to be introduced. The question is whether it will move and if there will be enough time next year. Obviously, veterans are critical with a large veteran population, especially of Native American veterans in Flagstaff and in the surrounding region. With the new Veterans Home, that's a huge boon for Arizona, and we will continue to work on funding to ensure that our veterans are taken care of. Gun violence has always been an issue of utmost concern. There has been moves afoot in Congress to reinstate the automatic weapons ban, and there have been others to limit clips and things of that nature. They haven't been talked about recently because of the energy's been sucked up out of the room by COVID and some of the other issues with regards to Build Back Better, the NDAA and appropriations, which are still out there. And finally, a lot of communities in Arizona were affected by the census negatively, and we continue to monitor and assist to get an accurate count. Arizona was projected to get another congressional seat because of our increasing population. That didn't pan out, and many folks feel like the numbers weren't counted correctly. So, we continue to monitor that. There are a lot of other issues. My recommendation to the council would be to focus on three or four, oh, there's one more slide, too. There's my recommendation, we focus on a lot of issues that are parochial in nature because only, only the city of Flagstaff can advocate for something like Rio the Flag because we're the only ones affected. Another issue that we've been monitoring closely is the Grand Canyon Protection Act. It was included in the House Build Back Better Agenda Bill, and we expect there to be a fight in the Senate whether to retain that language or not. So, we're really continuing to monitor that. Congressman Gohalva, Chairman Gohalva has been a champion for this issue. We continue to monitor it, and he has moved his bill as a standalone measure through the, I'm sorry, the House Committee, the House Natural Resources Committee, which he chairs, and it's supported by both our senators. So, it'll be interesting to see whether that can be included or not in the final Build Back Better. In terms of uranium, transport is obviously very important, but something I do want to highlight, in the IIJA, there was funding in there to clean up some of the brownfields and uranium tailings from some of the old mines that were been around Flagstaff and around the Navajo Nation. So, those will, there's enough funding in, I'm sorry, in IIJA to clean up, clean up those, those old uranium mines. So, that's something to look forward to. And then, obviously, forest health is the lifeblood. A crown fire can rip through the city of Flagstaff in about 60 seconds. There's been a lot of great work done at NAU's ERI, Ecological Restoration Institute. We continue to work on For Frye. I know the mayor and council members participated in a meeting with the chief of the Forest Service, Randy Moore, who pledged $54 million to help clean up and do some small-scale restoration efforts through For Frye. So, we're looking forward to that, cleaning up, cleaning up some of the, and cleaning up and making our forests more healthy. Also, there was 54, eight, I'm sorry, $7 million. uh, seven million dollars pledged uh from the Forest Service to go look at post wildfire mitigation and address some of those needs. Uh, finally, there is an appropriation in the Senate bill uh for three-and-a-half million dollars to address um some of the um forest health needs with regards to Flagstaff Watershed Protection Program, FWPP. So we're really excited about some of those opportunities as well. Next slide. Um, carbon fee is probably going to be the way we see some climate movement. And Senator Manchin has been opposed um to uh some of these climate provisions included because he's protecting his home state interest. But a carbon fee is something that um both Democrats and Republicans uh have been coming to the table to talk about. So there there may be some um carbon fee uh and dividend legislation uh in the very near future, and it could be included in the Build Back Better Bill. Obviously, um, dark skies are critical to to Arizona. We continue to look at at those opportunities to um, you know, continue those initiatives as well as open space, parks and natural areas. And we'll continue to look at those as well as the Endangered Species Act that has been critical to protecting species in and around uh Arizona and northern Arizona. Open up the discussion and I thank Sarah for all of her help in getting us to this place and uh look forward to this the discussion tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, thank you, Sarah. Um, council, uh, questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and um, thank you, Bob. Um, I, uh, you won't be surprised, Bob, to hear me say that uh I want to see us emphasize affordable housing everywhere that we can. And just a general note in both in both federal and state priorities, I would like to see us really focusing on um, I mean, all the areas are important, but the areas where we've de- declared an emergency, which of course is climate and um affordable housing. And it, I think regarding veterans, um, and Sarah Dar can um can correct me, but it seems to me like housing vouchers for veterans that that we've only received a handful of those. And I would think that um additional vouchers for veterans would be something that um most, all of our legislators could could get behind and would be very helpful to us in terms of finding affordable housing for people in our community. But just in general, I'd like to see um emphasis and urgency placed on affordable housing and on climate-related issues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and 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 hi, Bob. Thank you for your presentation and your your help in for the city of Flagstaff. Um, yeah, my my comments are gonna echo Vice Mayor's a little bit. I I also would like to see an increased focus on affordable housing. And I was hoping, oh, I just got an email from the person um that I was hoping to get more insight from, but it doesn't give me clarity. So I'll just say that I know there's efforts at the state level, which I think we're talking about next, so you know I'm gonna hold that. But but in addition to the affordable housing focus points, you know, I think Lytech really comes to mind in terms of low-income um tax credit housing. And anything we can do to further support that process um locally, I think, would be really beneficial to creating workforce housing. And then additionally, going to the other emergency that Vice Mayor spoke to, which is the climate that we've declared, um, multimodal transportation opportunities for in- infrastructure investments. Uh, we have a lot of big-ticket items on our active transportation master plan that need to be funded with uh limited funds that we have allocated, but funds that we could leverage with federal and state money to get the job done. Um, and so anything we can do to either under either under transportation and infrastructure or sustainability and climate, uh, whenever we can think about bike and ped and multimodal and and bus, um, I I think that would be a great benefit to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Uh, I will note that we the we do have multimodal transportation within uh the description here. But I I think you all know where we're headed as a city and our values here, that that needs to be a a a big priority amidst um, yeah, amidst our infrastructure with how we're moving, so. Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember Solis?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Bob, sending you grateful hearts to you and Anna and grateful heart to um Ms. Ms. Langley, um, just for your for your um stellar work, you know, advocating on behalf of the city. Uh, you know, I I um would want to continue with the our our iterated priorities, you know, as as um, you have um enumerated them according to different categories. Uh, economic development, transportation, infrastructure, um, community, social infrastructure and envi- environment. I do want to, I do want to dedicate a space to speak to another category on uh economic development, which can actually be tied to IIJA uh and more, is um support legislation and funding that improve workforce systems and strengthen workforce development, including but not limited to uh job training, internship, reskilling and apprenticeship programs within the region. Because I understand the IIJA speaks to the apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs related to construction and infrastructure work. But there's a whole gamut of workforce development and workforce system. And I understand the WIOA, which is the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, is up for reauthorization soon. And hopefully, those dollars will be uh trickled down to the state level and uh to our region, not only the city of Flagstaff, but uh through northern Arizona and open in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Well, I'll uh add in my two cents. Uh, first off, uh, right now, we have it categorized as carbon fees and dividends or, yeah. Carbon fee and dividend legislation. Um, I think this is too narrow. Um, that should be part of the uh description, but really focusing on climate action and uh adaptation goals that could can include anything from carbon feed and dividend to uh, you know, carbon capture and sequestration. It could be a matter of um increased investments in alternative energies, whatever it may be. But I think we need to change that category head and have that carbon fee and dividend as a subcategory of it. Um, secondly, I wanted to get an idea um about how the early childhood education uh is currently shaping up with the uh Build Back Better. And your thoughts on including that, if this is a possibility for localities or um, it it just seems this is gonna be a large opportunity if we're in a situation where um we are getting a large amount of money for three- and four-year-olds to get schooling and uh with some concerns from many of us that the state's not gonna match it. Could we do that at the local level? Um, anyways, if you could kind of speak to the early child education and what's going on with that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so a couple of things. Yes, there is um in Build Back Better, there is two things that I think are of interest to you. Uh, childhood education, um, which would, um, head start programs would start at for three and four, four-year-olds as opposed to kindergarten. I'll make that universal. Uh, and the second thing would be childcare. Both are uh in flux, uh, more so the childcare provision. Uh, Senator Manchin has raised some concerns with that. But I think to your question, can the can the locals match that? And I think the answer is yes. Um, I can't say that definitively if the state doesn't match, but my understanding is that this that the the city would be able to to provide that match. Is that actually a question, Mayor?
Sorry, did you say we would not be able to do the match?
Would.
We would, okay, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. And that was the one thing I really wanted to advocate for. We've, the Mayor's Education Roundtable, we've been very concerned and wanting to ensure that if states do not match, that we still have the possibility as a locality to access funds through matching or however means we we can, through other partnerships.
Mayor, I'll get you an, I'll get you an answer to that and I will uh send it to you and to Sarah, okay?
Excellent. And that might, if we are putting this into legislative priorities, uh, that may be something we could fit in also with the workforce development aspect, uh, since those are intrinsically connected. So, um, Councilmember Shimonie?
Yeah, really quick, one last priority I forgot to mention um that maybe is worth highlighting. And Bob, I'm looking to you for your expertise and same to our team here at the city is in regards to partnerships between um communities, specifically thinking about our indigenous communities. You know, being a border town, I I do wonder if there's federal um legislation or even funding or or advocacy that the city should do to further enhance our relationship with our tribal partners. You know, there's a lot of, I think, focus going towards the the different tribal um communities from the federal level. And and we are very much an extension of of them, and this is tribal land. So I do wonder what the city of Flagstaff can do to potentially further that relationship through our federal priorities. Um, Bob, what do you think? Is there anything that comes to mind?
Well, I can't say this, Mayor. I mean, I'm uh, sorry, Councilmember Shimonie. Um, that's a, that's a great question. And overlooked provision in IIJA is that there is about twelve billion dollars um for a lot of these um, a lot of these uh programs, tribal water, uh, transportation and things like that. A lot of these issues are um, they're more county-related than 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 city-related, but you can combine some of these these monies. For instance, there's a new program created um called the National uh National Roads and Legacy Program. It's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar program within IIJA that um connects um uh federal entities, for instance, uh, federal land, of which there's a lot in northern Arizona and the tribes and things like that. There's also um a a provision, and I don't know what the funding mechanism is, um, but it can, it, one of the points is of this funding is to interconnect communities of interest. And so there's, you know, that that could be another potential funding avenue. Um, Councilmember, let me get you, I'll send you some additional information on that and then let's have a further discussion.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Bob. Um, check the chat here. All right, uh, with that, I think we are ready to move on to our state and just lay the priorities.
Thank you, Bob.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. It's me again. I I put a C in the comment box. I don't know if it's showing up correctly.
Okay, well, yeah, my apologies if I missed that. I'm gonna check what's going on here and reboot it. Uh, but yeah, please go ahead.
No worries whatsoever, and I'll I'll keep this brief. Bob, I just wanted to uh pop in real quickly to give uh my thumbs up. This looks like a good list. Uh, there's a couple, I I I wanted to echo the mayor's um idea about putting a carbon fee and dividend legislation under a larger umbrella. As long as we do um continue to single that out specifically as as a good idea uh to be pursuing under that umbrella. And then I don't want to open a big can of worms here, Council. Uh, and I I want to be sure not to, you know, be trying to introduce uh my particular pet legislative efforts. Um, but I did want to just give voice to one concern that's certainly on the horizon, if not already here, and something that we might want to consider weighing in on at some point, even if we don't do it now, and that is voting rights. Um, and uh a very, very troubling um sort of landscape out there where we're seeing voting rights being whittled away at at every conceivable level, including down at the local level. Uh, and so, I mean, I I'm very, very troubled and concerned about our, the very state of our democracy in the next decade. Uh, and so I I didn't want to just stay completely quiet on that front. It may not be something that's uh of a federal priority level for us here in Flagstaff. Um, but I did want to give voice to it. Um, if we can, if we can be supportive of any efforts to strengthen uh the right to vote and the convenience of voting and to make sure that impartial, fair jurists are in charge of our uh all the levers and all the apparatus um of our of our voting mechanism um from the local level on up to the state and federal level, I think it would be important to 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 share our voice in that regard. Uh, and I may have other comments about the state landscape, but I'll save those for for later.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I am supportive of the list as presented and I do support the comments that we've heard around the table here, uh, including in particular, uh, the comments of Mr. Aslan about voting rights. That's just so basic to our uh democracy, our republic. And uh, these efforts to diminish people's right to vote is uh very troubling. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I will note that that is currently in our state priorities. Um, but obviously, that we're coming to the level of needing some federal intervention on this process. So uh, I'm not sure if we need to formalize it, but I I mean, we do for the federal level, but it is in our state level. And um, yeah, we're, I think we're all real clear where we're standing from this dais on on that front, so. All right. Well, thank you, Bob, and we can turn it over to, yeah, Todd here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Todd Medeska can join us now.
Mayor, Councilman, um, Councilmembers, Todd Medexa, Elevated Advocacy. Thanks for having me tonight. And it's an opportunity to sort of rehash and revisit our state priorities that that we've developed over the past year and see what kind of tweaks we need to make. I I wrote down a couple of thoughts I want to talk to you about before we start talking about some of the topics. I want to um sort of describe what what the atmosphere we think is gonna look like this coming year. Uh, first of all, so so I started taking some notes yesterday. And so the first thing I really wrote down was timing. The timing of this legislative session is very interesting. Um, you all may be interested to know twenty-twenty-two is going to be an election year. Some of you may be running as well. There's a gubernatorial race going on. And there's also some statewide races being uh competed for by see, by seated legislators at the Capitol. So we have this dynamic going on where people are um really trying to bring their, what they view as their uh vital topics, their their topics de jour to the forefront. Um, to wit, there's a hearing, I think it's next week, might be right after Christmas, where they're going to be examining the uh election of twenty-twenty again at the legislature. Um, this is following a very tumultuous um interim where we had an audit that was conducted on Maricopa County. And we had various uh drama associated with that, and I'll leave it at that. But what it created was an atmosphere that uh that brings me to my next topic, was margins. The legislative houses are, have very tight margins. But what was interesting to to me and to other, to some of my colleagues that down there is the number of new members already in the legislator, legislature is roughly about a third. Now, that's what you would see in an election year. So we're starting to look at it like, okay, we have a brand-new uh a third of a brand-new legislators this session. And then we're gonna have in another election. Is this, is this signs of something coming? We don't know yet. Um, attitudes, you know, I I brought up the the uh the audit of twenty-twenty-one and and what it's really resulting in is a very polarized, some people will call it a hyper-partisan atmosphere at the legislature. And what I mean by that is there are talks every so often about, let's do some things bipartisan. Forest health is a perfect example. Forest fires don't care if you're Republican or Democrat. Those topics, those type of topics probably aren't going to be the kind of topics that we have this year. And that means it's going to be a lot harder for folks like me to do my job because it's going to be, I can't talk to half the legislature about this because of the name on the bill or because of the topic, they just won't even consider it. And then finally, I will tell you, there are things that surpass my understanding that will affect us, and I don't know what those are yet. This is just another way of saying there are things I don't know, and I don't know what those are, you know? So what I wrote down here is the effects from elections, from the audit, as I talked about. There's about $2 billion of money that we weren't anticipating. And you would think that that would be a good thing. There's money to spend. And the fact of the matter is, it's much harder. It's about $700 million of identified ongoing revenue. It's about 1.2 billion of one-time ARPA money, one-time money that we had coming in that the legislative budgetiers are not comfortable saying, you will have this again next year, we just don't know it yet. What that means is that there's going to be fights saying, okay, do we have a tax cut? Do we spend money on programs? Where do we spend that money? And that will delay session from getting out. And then the last thing I put down here, let's see what else. Oh, other issues that are going to play a role. So the tax cut referendum that's going in front of the voters, I don't know how that's going to affect the legislature right now, but it is going to affect it. They're gonna have to decide how to do future tax cuts and if they would like to do future tax cuts, or is it better just to go to the voters with those things right away? The second one was, there was a court decision that said, it basically struck down a lot of the budget bills because they said, well, you're including policy discussions in the budget bills, and so it violates the one-subject law. And that is going to have a lasting impact on how we craft policy in the state moving forward. And then finally, as one of my colleagues said, hey, the legislature decided there was a drought, so we anticipate some significant water legislation in the coming year. We're gonna watch that from a northern Arizona perspective. And I do want to talk about something that came up. So last session, the head of the government committee was Michelle Eugenti-Rida, and she got into a fight with another member and basically held that member's bills, Senator Townsend's bills, held her bills and pushed her election bills all forward, evolved to where she was a critic of the audit, and through a series of missives with the president of the senate, resigned her seat as the government chair. Now Senator Townsend, who was on the outs last session, is now the chair of the government committee. And so we anticipate seeing all of those bills that she was running on elections to come to the fore. So your concerns about voting rights, your concerns about how elections are conducted are well-founded, well-timed, and we are aware of them and we're watching it. The bills are things like, you have to do a mandatory recount if the vote is within a certain percentage or things along those lines. And so we'll start watching those and seeing what those are, and certainly are going to be concerned with any kind of move to restrict voting access to folks. I'm gonna take a breath right there, and I can try and answer some questions if there are any. And then, do you want to go through the slides, or would you like? Sure? So we'll start there. But let's stop right there for right now. Are there questions, Mr. Mayor, if I can answer any?
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions at this time? Yeah, Councilmember Shumoni?
Really quick question. Thank you, Todd, for being with us and your update so far. Just quite curious, you know, through the political lens that you spoke to in regards to this being an election year, what are some of the bigger topics that individuals will be running on and really, you know, making, driving points home on?
It's going to be elections. It's going to be accusations of voter fraud. It's going to be accusations of, well, we don't know if there is voter fraud because we didn't do a really good audit. It's going to be, again, just hyper-partisanship, and it's everything you're reading in the newspaper and coming out. There are multiple people running for multiple offices, for instance, Secretary of State. And so those folks will be focused on elections because that's what the Secretary of State basically does, right? People running for treasurer will be focusing on trying to get their name recognition up. It's going to be a very interesting session.
And quick follow-up to that. Is there any buzz around short-term rentals or housing that you're hearing of?
There is. You know, it's premature to sort of really tell you what is going to be offered because we have just started saying, okay, well, what's the best approach to move forward? Short-term rentals are being discussed in two, sort of along two different pathways. And I don't want to take your thunder. Would you, okay. So they're being discussed along two different pathways. One is a proliferation of short-term rentals that crowds out the housing market. And so it makes affordable housing less affordable. It makes housing, just housing in general, less affordable, and it tightens the supply of available housing. The second avenue is houses that are repeatedly rented out week after week for large groups to come in and disrupt the community. And so, for lack of a better word, we'll call those party houses. You know, our impression is we have a significant interest in the proliferation of affordable housing in Flagstaff and in northern Arizona in general. We share those concerns with communities like Sedona. But then there are other communities like Lake Havasu City, which is saying, that's not our main concern. We're more concerned, we would like to take care of that, but our main concern is with the party houses. And so which one becomes more likely to get passed? What does it mean if you pass something, but it's not everything? And so we're trying to work that through as a stakeholder group and see where we can get the most traction. So yes, that is definitely an issue that we're talking about. And we're talking about it as part of a coalition across the state.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Kind of a follow-up to that last conversation. I think if you took a poll of this council, there would be unanimous agreement that we have a housing problem. And I'm sure that would be true in our community. My question is, does the state legislature in general understand that this state has a housing problem? It isn't just a Flagstaff problem. It's more acute here, but it's a problem all across the state. Do you think there's any appreciation for that issue in general at the legislature?
My answer to that question is that there is an appreciation that is growing. So it's not at our level yet. You know, Flagstaff is like at a 10. The rest of the state is coming up. But it's funny when you go down there and you have members stop you and say, man, did you hear about Jerome? Their employees have to live someplace else and come into Jerome, and they're creating, guess what, a parking issue. Well, you know, it's fun to be able to look at them and say, well, let me tell you about Flagstaff. Here's what we're dealing with in Flagstaff. And we've, you know, we've been, Jerome is nice, and I'm sorry that they're having an issue, but we're significantly larger and we have that issue. You know, it's helpful to us when we have places like Sedona agree with us and complement our talking points with their own talking points. And then this is the last thing I'll say about it. And I'll, you know, we can have more of a dialogue. I saw a presentation regarding the housing supply for Phoenix, and the statement was something along, I'm paraphrasing, so I don't want to be quoted, but it was something along the lines of, we could build housing for the next five years and still just be right at zero. You know, that is to say, we would have enough housing for people, but we wouldn't have a surplus. And so when the problem hits Maricopa County, when the problem hits Phoenix, then all of a sudden, that raises the knowledge base at the legislature. And so while we don't wish that on our neighbors, certainly we're going to reap benefits from them coming up to the same issue that we have. And having, you know, statewide economists saying, yeah, this is what we're facing, it's helpful to us and to our talking points.
Thank you.
So Mayor, with your permission, I'll just start going through some of these priorities.
Yeah, please proceed.
These will be familiar to most of you. I believe we talked about a lot of these last session, but you know, it's another opportunity to sort of discuss them and re-explain what we mean and to hear what kind of tweaks might be advisable or to have you all ask questions about them. You know, it all really starts off with preserved local decision-making. We do not benefit from people in Phoenix trying to tell us what we should be doing up here for our community. And so really, I don't know of a local government that I've ever worked for or that I've worked with that doesn't say, okay, we need to support the ability for us to make local decisions up here locally. And so, again, it's just an overarching sort of principle that guides my direction down there. It guides Sarah's direction, and it really helps us kind of decide, here's how we're gonna proceed on any given issue. If it violates us, we don't need to come back to you and say, we oppose it. We know you oppose it. If it's questionable, okay, we come back and say, hey, this is what it does. Can we have some direction? State shared revenues. You know, we need to, so we need to make sure that we are able to preserve our share of the state shared revenues. It's just too important for us to give up and where possible, to recover those, anything that is stripped from us due to unfunded mandates from the state. And then the third topic is the short-term rentals. You see that there? I think I just talked about that enough, so I will. If there are questions about this slide, I guess I will point out something about this. It's another talking point that really is salient to us is the idea that, well, hotels pay a certain tax rate. You know, short-term rentals need to be treated like hotels. People are, people, corporations, you know, businesses are purchasing short-term rentals in numbers, and they're operating them just like a hotel. And so there are things that we should do to try and level the playing field, you know, across the state. And so that's something that we're sort of, that is in the talking points and that's working. And it's also salient, you know, it is one of our more effective ones.
Just a sec here, Councilmember McCarthy?
My understanding, based on an email from Sarah today, thank you, Sarah, is that there's already some provisions in the law that give primary residences certain tax advantages over second homes. There's, my son works in the construction industry, and he's telling me that the new houses that are being built, they're not for people that live in Flagstaff to live in. They're being sold to people from California and Phoenix that have two and three and four houses. And in my neighborhood, there's houses that the people are there two or three days a month. So my question is, do you think we could do some more to give an advantage, at least property tax-wise, to people that live in the primary residence as opposed to second homes, weekenders homes?
So this is why you all hire me, because I have to deliver bad news to you. The answer to your question is no.
I don't want to hear it.
I know. The answer to your question is no, not this session. Mr. McCarthy, what you're suggesting is a massive undertaking of rewriting some property tax bills. And so that means we'd have to include other cities. We'd have to include the county treasurers, county assessors, probably the county board of supervisors. But you can't just do that up here and do it in a quick meeting. It would be statewide. And so I appreciate what you're suggesting. I think we're 95% of the way there. You know, I think that what you have, in your email, what you outlined, we already do most of that. We do treat them differently. The county assessors are putting forward a bill to try and say, okay, well, if you have two or more, I think if you have three or more, then you're automatically grouped as a commercial property, and it's not, it's not, you don't get the homeowner benefit. I'd have to go back and reread the bill. The bill has an uphill battle to go, but, you know, the assessors are running it. The Arizona Association of Counties is the primary sort of driving, the tip of the spear driving that. And so we'll keep an eye on it. And certainly, we've supported it in the past, we'll support it again, but it has an uphill battle.
All right, so it sounds like for now it would be unnecessary to add this to our formal list. But I would just ask you, you know, person to person, to kind of keep that on your radar and get back to us if there's something we can do on it.
I think that's a, I like, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Mayor, Mr. McCarthy, I appreciate the direction. I will tell you, I would suggest that we sort of really, if you want to move forward on something like that, you're looking at a multi-year process. And we really need to kind of flesh out, like, what is it you want to accomplish so that we know going to stakeholders, here's what we want to do. And then we can start, we can start the process, you know? But that's going to be making sure that the assessor in Yavapai County agrees with the assessor in Mojave County, who agrees with the Cochino County assessor. It's a lengthy process.
So are you saying that maybe we should just kind of, you know, keep our eyes and ears open on this? Or are you saying that maybe we should start a, start the slow and long process a little more formally?
I would say both. I would say both. We can keep our eyes and ears open. In my experience, things like that don't just pop up. They're a result of an in-depth stakeholder process where people come to the legislature and say, we've all talked about it, we all agree on this, here's what we want to run.
So it may be appropriate for you and your informal meetings with other people, other cities, other lobbyists?
Right, start running.
To kind of like put a little water on the plant and hopefully it'll grow, even though that's a slow process?
Yes, right. I mean, that's a great analogy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I think that's it. Forest health, you know, the forest health is, you know, it's tantamount to this community. It's not something that we can think about, you know, in the abstract. It affects us daily. I think our forests are getting better because of our treatment efforts. You know, but especially after the last season, the forest fires of last season, and especially after the flooding that we saw in this community resulting from previous fires, you know, there's certainly some traction to be had. Again, forest health is really not a partisan issue, right? So it might be one of those things that could slip through, but we'll have to wait and see. Transportation, similarly, potholes, don't know if you're Republican or Democrat. You know, so looking at the ADOT and their transportation plan, one of the things that we have noticed in the past session that I want to mention briefly is, when I started doing this, the way you funded transportation projects is you went to the transportation board and you said, okay, I want this project to be included. And so the transportation board would come up with a list, and then as your project moved up the list, your project was closer to being funded. What we've noticed in the past two sessions, I'll say, an increase in legislators saying, I'll give you my vote for the budget if you fund this transportation project. And so that transportation project jumps anything else that's, you know, in its way, and they will fund a specific transportation project in statute. From a public policy perspective, it's not the way you should be funding transportation projects, really. From a political standpoint, it makes a lot of sense because it's a way to pay off for votes to say, okay, we'll fund a road in your district and you will vote for our budget. And it'll work. So it's something that we have to deal with. If you have a weak legislative delegation, you're probably less likely to succeed. If you have a strong, I don't want to say strong, if you have a legislative delegation that's willing to hold up their vote on the budget for these specific items, then it works for them. And then we have affordable housing on here as well. We've noticed at the state level an increase in the conversation surrounding homelessness, surrounding the issue of affordable housing for lower-wage workers. And so those things are all, while you're sorry to hear those discussions going on, it gives us hope that, okay, maybe this is becoming more of a salient topic again. Rural broadband, criminal justice reform diversion programs, I'll talk about that for a second. Walt Blackman is going to be the chair of the Judiciary Committee in the House. And so he will be seeing all of the criminal justice bills go through his committee. And so he has been a strong advocate for some of these reform and diversion programs. He's probably been one of the more active and vocal proponents for it. So it bodes well that maybe this year is something that can go through. But this goes back to, will Democrats vote for Walt Blackman bill? You know, we're waiting to see. But in an era where there's hyper-partisanship, will people be able to put that partisanship aside and say, yeah, but this is really a good idea for, and this will help a lot of people? idea for, and this will help a lot of people, and, you know, we can, we can be hopeful about it. Corporation Commission, we still are, you know, we're monitoring them as much as they can be lobbied. We're lobbying them and pushing for 100% carbon-free clean energy. Elections, we've talked about. Tourism, I think is sort of, it works itself pretty well. I know that Heidi Hansen has a very good relationship with the State Office of Tourism, and so, we capitalize on that relationship as much as we possibly can. And I believe that's it. So, I am happy to go backwards, and we can put up, pull up any of these. Rural broadband, you all have talked about, I didn't really talk about that too much. We've talked about that somewhat. Especially in the past two years, it really has driven home the necessity for broadband access to rural Arizona, and I think people see that, and they're starting to hopefully put some more money coming our way, both with the ARPA funds and with the state. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions if there are.
Yeah, thank you. Counsel, let me jump in. I have a few comments. Councilmember McCarthy?
Oh, okay, then I will go ahead. A couple of things. Again, I know the landscape's going to be tumultuous, and this might not be in the realm of possibilities, but we really need to be pushing for inclusionary zoning into housing at our state level to allow us to have that authority here locally, to require affordable housing in new developments. The other thing would be, we, we're kind of moving into some uncharted territory regarding potentially bonding for climate action and adaptation, and there are some rules and procedures that, within the state, at the state level, that may cause certain difficulties in us seeing that through. And I just wanted, we're still working out what that might be, but I wanted to put it on the radar that we may be in a position that we really need some legislation down south to loosen restrictions, or at least clarify how, and Sterling, if you wanted to pop in, I see you looking at me, I don't want to tread on legal territory.
All good, you're good, Mayor, thanks.
Cool. And the, so, I just want to put that on our radar, especially as we start moving forward, we may have some roadblocks at the state level. The third thing I wanted to mention that does, doesn't necessarily need to go into the state legislative priorities, but I'm very concerned about the cap on spending for our school districts. FUSD is going to lose $12 million come this spring unless the state legislature allows the cap to either be removed or extended until an initiative can get on the ballot. This is due to the proposition for increasing taxes on our wealthier individuals in the state to fund our education programs, while now they're running into an expenditure cap. So, think about it, 15 schools in FUSD getting hit by $12 million is substantial and affects drastically our community, and I want us to be pressing that at the state ledge, that whatever interventions can happen, that would be very helpful.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, that's, that's a great point for me to just sort of outline how, how I like to work is, I would imagine something like that is being discussed with the school board superintendents and with the school associations. You know, that's something that we can definitely inject ourselves into the process, and we don't have to take the lead on that. But what we can do is stand behind them and say, yeah, we support that as well, and you should be voting for.
Right.
Whatever, you know, utilizing their expertise, and then we can just lend our voice to their voice. And so, I mean, I think that's an excellent example of just coalition building that, okay, well, let's go, you know, make ourselves part of that coalition, and let's follow their lead, and let's learn something along the process.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I just want to make sure that we are supporting them in the, as the city in those efforts. So, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, and thank you for keeping your pulse on the state, so to speak. I'm going to ask you a question, and you may just say, well, I don't want to get into that. I'll give you that option. Do you have any comments on the redistricting process?
I always have that option, Mr. McCarthy. I don't. You know, the redistricting process is a political process. I deal with policy. You know, it, I don't want to be glib about it. There are two parties. One's a winner, one's a loser, and 10 years from now, it's going to be flip-flopped. So, I've seen, this is the third redistricting commission I've seen. I've never met anyone who's happy with how the redistricting commission has operated, ever. It's probably the best, it's probably the best process in the country. So, you know, if you're upset with it, I'm sorry you're upset with it. Give it 10 years, you'll love it.
I'm not sure I believe that, but anyway, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Anyone else? Councilmember Schimoni?
Sure, I'll jump in. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Todd, again, for your candor and your honesty and communication this evening, and your advocacy for the city of Flagstaff.
That's usually a precursor to me being fired.
You are dismissed. I just wanted to circle back to housing and say that I've heard about something at the state level, and I, I'm sorry I'm being vague about this, and this is simply because I don't remember the details, but there was something in regards to Lytech funding of developers, low-income tax credits, and it was something that the state was considering again. And I heard this from a Lytech developer who said, you know, if there's anything the city can do to help the state progress in that Lytech funding that used to be there from the state, and I can get you more details about this when I find out, I'll reach out to this individual, but if the council supports this within the housing, in affordable housing category, I, what I'm hearing is that it'll help a lot of Lytech developers continue to do their business within the state, including Flagstaff.
I think I attended a meeting last session about this, and it didn't go anyplace. I'm happy, if you send me what information you have, I'm happy to look into it. Again, this goes back to the same thing as the school issue, Mr. Mayor. This is something that we can definitely get involved in, and we should be part of the, you know, we should be part of the coalition. We certainly were last year, and if it's moving forward, you know, we can do so again. I, but yeah, that's, I would love to see that information.
Okay.
And I don't think that's something, I mean, that would be something that I would go forward with, and then call Sarah and say, hey, make sure the council's, you know, and we would brief you on it, and make sure that there were at least five of you saying, yes, move forward. But, yeah, that's.
Very good. Okay, that's helpful. And then, Mayor, thanks for bringing up inclusionary zoning. I have no idea how realistic this is at the state in terms of working through this, but I think we should be at least trying to, or planting the seeds to see that come to fruition within our lifetimes, maybe. But I think the city of Flagstaff, I think, would definitely get behind that advocacy and that priority within housing. That's, that's a big one. And then, moving on from housing, voting rights, you know, as Councilmember, as I brought up in the last topic, I definitely see a lot of value in that topic at the state level. I know it's extremely partisan, and I don't know how, how well we can be effective, but whatever we can do that makes sense, I support. And, you know, just speaking about the partisan nature of the state right now makes me think about what Councilmember McCarthy and I spoke to last week after the meeting, and my comment to him, which is, you know, look at, look at the value of what's being said, not who's saying it. And that, you know, if there's anything that we should do in terms of a state priority, asking our state legislators to rise above the fray and the politics, to get the work done for our communities and for our people, maybe that should be a priority, to remind them, hey, you work for the people and not just your party, and you represent all of us. I have no idea if that would carry or have any value or even backfire, but I just can't stand the games. And, you know, if our representative, Walt Blackman, is bringing forward great bills and legislature and efforts that I 100% support, and I believe this council and the city supports, maybe we need to be engaging our, like, the Democrats at the state and say, hey, folks, yes, Walt's maybe a registered Republican or independent, or what, it doesn't even matter, but we'd support what he's advocating for. What are your thoughts?
I, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Schimoni, I mean, I think that's an excellent idea. I don't see any reason why you wouldn't do something like that. He has some very strong ideas. Now, you know, to the, to the level that you're, you know, welcomed and accepted for that, and that you can persuade people, you got to make the, you got to make the effort, you know, and then at least you can sleep at night, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schimoni. I wanted to mention with the Arizona, that what you may be thinking about is the Arizona Department of Housing, and they have reduced their process for filing Lytech from like 360 pages to now 30 pages. So, you may be thinking more of administrative decisions rather than state legislative decisions, but I could be wrong. I'd like to see that as well, to see what's going on and what we can do. Is that, for a follow-up for, yeah, and then we have Councilmember Solis, and then Vice Mayor online.
I just want to strongly support what Mr. Schimoni said. If there's a good bill out there, I don't care who introduced it. I don't care if he's a Republican, a Democrat, a socialist, I don't care what he is. If it's a good bill, support it. And just as a footnote, I'm reading a book right now called The Second Civil War, and it's about the very subject of partisanship, hyper-partisanship, polarization. Very interesting read. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that's the essence of, you know, identifying our legislative priorities at the federal and state level. Once we adopt these priorities, we support legislation and funding that support our priorities, and then oppose that do not support or negate our priorities. I do want to give Mr. Matex a grateful heart. Thank you for, for your work advocating on behalf of the city, our state legislature. I can only imagine how tough it is to, to wrestle with many political issues and nuances that you have to deal with on a daily basis, representing Flagstaff. I do want to speak to, first, I would like to continue with our priorities and maybe fine-tune, or even add bullet points on specific or target, target objectives. I do want to add a voice to the same ask that I focus in terms of workforce development, and I heard this from the Department of Economic Security representatives which oversee the, the Warforce Investment Opportunity Act and the workforce budget for the state, is to, in fact, the specific ask to launch, you know, job training skills, apprenticeship, and pre-apprenticeship. So, if we could have an iteration of a priority that will support legislation and funding to improve workforce systems and strengthen workforce development, including but not limited to job training, internship, rescaling, and apprenticeship. Because there is, there was a survey that was done by the National Association of Workforce Board, because I'm saying this with, with information, because I'm on the Coconia County Workforce Development Board, so I have, I'm very close to the issue. There was a survey that, you know, last year, respondent of workforce development boards across the nation have reduced funding. And, and funding displaced youth and displaced, displaced workers and youth. So, which is, and I actually put some on the chat just to enumerate those other salient points from that survey. So, I believe we have to add a voice at a local level in support of a statewide, you know, effort in, in improving our workforce system and strengthening our workforce development point, and make sure, and make sure our workforce boards receive the funding, the allocated funding, at least, the full allocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Hold on, why is my camera? Okay, there we go. I just want to echo what has been said about local control, specifically around affordable housing and around short-term rentals. I know that our staff talks with staff in other communities really frequently, and, and I know that other communities are voicing concern about not being able to regulate short-term rentals, and also just not having all the tools that we need in our toolbox in order to create affordable housing for our various communities. And so, I think that there's, I think that there's room to start creating those, or strengthening those relationships with real intention, and that intention being getting some legislation introduced that would give local communities more control over things like housing. And I think that the landscape has changed a little in terms of communities are recognizing the affordable housing problems that they have in their communities, and so, maybe the, you know, we can have the Realtors and join in with us and, and get some legislation into, maybe we don't even want to use all the tools, but just allowing us the opportunity to apply them where they, where they would be helpful. And inclusionary zoning is, is one of those. Anyway, I just, I think that we could, and with your help, work to strengthen and be intentional about our relationships with other communities, and, and also have them lobby their representatives to get some change down there that would, that would make it more possible for us to create the affordable housing that we desperately need.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah?
Just really quick, I just wanted to also just put my support behind what Councilmember Solis talked about, and just say that I fully agree with what Councilmember Solis is advocating for, and appreciate the advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schimoni. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'll try to keep this brief. I just want to throw my support behind most of the things I've, I've heard this evening. And I wanted to give a particular shout-out, Todd, to your mention of the Arizona Corporation Commission. Thank you for keeping an eye out on them and for maintaining those lines of communication. I hope we can activate whenever we need to with some strong relationships there, and let's continue building those relationships between Corporation Commission members and our own council. And I just wanted to add one last thing again. Again, this was mentioned in the packet, supporting state funding and initiatives around dark skies. This also includes opposing measures that would endanger our dark skies, including lighting, lighted billboards on our, on our highways and roads, and, and other measures that might degrade the critical mission of the Naval Observatory up here, and our own special interests in having dark skies for tourism and economic development purposes. So, whatever we can do to boost measures that will protect dark skies and oppose measures that would weaken our dark skies, I think that's an important other side of the coin. I, I like how you approached being in a supportive role for funding with the school district. I do like to tread very lightly on that. That is a different jurisdictional beast, and our own legislative priorities should be focused on the funding that we need to operate as a city and to achieve our goals. But of course, what are we doing anything for if we are not supportive of well-funded But of course, what are we doing anything for if we are not supportive of well-funded public education? So I just preach, I just appreciate the nuanced approach to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. With that, I'm not seeing anything further in the chat in here. So thank you so much, Todd and Sarah, for all your work on this. I know it's not an easy job. So with that, though, we're gonna take a bit of a break. Let's, let's have a decent break, twenty minutes. So we'll be back here at five seventeen here. We are down to agenda item number seven. This is the Southside Character Overlay Zone from the citizens' petition. Mr. Seimer?
Mayor members of council, Dan Seimer, zoning code manager for the city for at least another week. The, sorry. The case before you today is regarding a citizen petition that was submitted back in September twenty-eighth of two thousand and eleven. In October, y'all looked at that and asked for a work session on this item. And I have with me today Mark Rivas, who's our neighborhood planner and our historic preservation officer. At that meeting, the council had a handful of questions about how this relates to the Southside Community Plan and how it would further promote those goals, how a character overlay can be incorporated and how the provisions of the overlay would be implemented. Throughout this presentation, there's a lot of information that is not just applicable to this application, but to many character overlays. And what's in your packet is a lot of general information, too. So we wanted to make sure you had a gamut of information to be prepared for this. So before I hand it off to Mark, the location we're specifically talking about is generally located east of San Francisco Avenue in the Green Thick Line. And we're referring to this area very generally as the WC Riles area. So we need, it was an easy way to pick a name so that we're separating the areas out of the downtown. And it's north of Butler. So in that kind of general location is the area we're talking about. There are other areas that a historic overlay could be applied, but this petition is specific to that area. And now I'll hand it off to Mark for his part of the presentation. Thank you.
I'm Mark Rivas, Heritage Preservation Officer and, most importantly, Neighborhood Planner. That's something I want more people to come to me regarding neighborhood issues along the way. So the request from, it came from the neighborhood. They came and called me up and the neighborhood got together. It was very much a grassroots effort to approach me and make sure that they were concerned about pressures that were coming their way. And they want to protect their residential quality. I held multiple meetings in the Southside within this neighborhood. They were very active. I always made sure that they understood that it was coming from them, what they were asking for. Of course, it's a historic area in the Southside Plan. It was called out as a preservation focus area. It's also targeted in the Southside Plan as that very residential area. They consider it their affordable housing. It does have a higher density just by being a historic neighborhood. They did write a letter as well that I think you received, which also talked about, they understood that it was going to grow. They also understood that they had a desire for higher density when need be, so ADUs or adding on to their homes that they have there. So the neighborhood organized themselves. We had those multiple meetings. I listened a lot and they finally came to this direction and knowing that they had to write a letter and also to do a petition. So it is definitely consistent with the Southside Plan, the adopted plan. There's actually three neighborhood preservation focus areas that are very much residential, and that's in the Southside Plan as well. Overlay, certainly, Southside, they were aware of the Southside Plan. They're also aware of, we recently just finished updating the historic inventory for the Southside Plan. So they're aware of what was going on there. So the overlay is guided by the regional plan. It's also guided by the Southside Community Plan and Chapter Three Goals and Policies. So, "Southside Communities Shall Promote Sustainable Improvements That Enhance and Embrace Our Heritage Through Cultural Stewardship, Retaining the Unique Character and Cultural Fabric and Flavor of Our Neighborhood." And of course, we know Southside ethnic neighborhood story, the inventory update bumped into the sixties and the whole story of the civil rights movement is also gonna be included. So pretty excited about doing the inventory update that I have to go in front of the state and have that inventory updated. We got a lot of policies here. I won't read them all, but be assured that it's consistent with the regional plan and those policies that are fully incorporated into the regional plan and meeting those goals and policies. And then the Southside Community Plan. Protect the historic character of the Southside, a unique community in Flagstaff. Preserve the integrity of those structures. Protect and promote adaptive reuse of landmarks. It was noted in their letter as well, the most sustainable piece of architecture is one that already exists. So when we're talking about, you know, saving resources, certainly reusing and adaptively reusing buildings is important. Architectural features, historic buildings can be compatible with new construction. And encourage preservation and rehabilitation of structures. And they, again, are small houses. I've heard it again and again, the residents that came to me, they go, "That is our affordable housing." And they take care of it, and they've invested in it. The area is called out as a residential core and as a historic preservation focus area. When you look at this map, you'll see the one in the upper right, which would be the northeast corner, is one preservation focus area. One below Butler is another area, and then one over toward Mike's Pike is another one. Heritage preservation in this case, because we're calling it preservation and character overlay, it accommodates growth and change. And again, the residents made that clear in their letter. So approximately seventy percent of the lots in the area contain historic structures and many others could possibly be adapted and changed to, again, promote that historic character that they were concerned about. Why now? Concerns of encroaching development and loss of neighborly quality. They made a point, you know, a child able to ride a bike through their neighborhood. Concerns of loss of diversity in age and ethnicity. Concerns of loss of historic character. Knowing your neighbor, lockable, safe, that is definitely the case in that neighborhood. And concern of increased unsafe street traffic, that's riding your bicycle and having a family, raise your family there. So there's a pretty incredible mix of young and old that are concerned about preserving their neighborhood. Objectives. The new developments that will take place there, that's saying that there will be demolitions, there will be changes, there will be additions. It should reflect the values and concerns of the existing community using an overlay with simple design standards, guidelines and criteria that allow and enhance new development and respect the existing structures. It's certainly environmentally sustainable, reusing structures. Small lots, again, are probably higher density than you would imagine in other neighborhoods. There's a large variety of homes that were built, very simple vernacular-type architecture. It's affordable housing for the families that live there. And certainly, we talked about tourism and that that's important. And certainly, our ethnic history is important in the area. Enactment, that goes to Mr. Seimer?
Thanks, Mark. So to make this overlay, proposed overlay, go forward, there's, there's a process. And each of the historic overlays or character overlays do require a zoning code text amendment to create the zone in the zoning code. And then it's filed up with a supplemental zoning map amendment to rezone that portion of the Southside that's being proposed with the overlay. And as part of that process, Mark talked a little bit about the development standards and design standards that would be used. There is a requirement to adopt those standards as part of an ordinance that would come along with that. So when it comes to initiating a zoning text amendment and a map when it pertains to a, this type of an overlay, any property owner that owns land in the area where it's gonna be applied can apply for that zone. It can also be initiated by the planning director at the city council's direction or by the planning director at the direction of the Historic Preservation Commission. When they initiate, Historic Preservation Commission would have to initiate them, the zoning code text amendment and the map at the same time, whereas the council can initiate one separately, but it's uncommon to do them separately. So they can be initiated. One of the big things about the map part of it, though, is regardless of who initiates it, it does require at least fifty-one percent of the property owners in the boundary of the overlay to be in support. So they would have to submit a separate petition to have those. And of course, we would, would verify those signatures. The petition that was submitted with, to start this process, had fifteen signatures, which represent a very small amount of the property owners, but they have all been in communication with Mark, not all of them, a good majority have been talking. Although, once that map amendment starts really gravitating teeth and the council wants to make a decision on it, we would need fifty-one percent of those property owners to proceed. When it comes to our work program, at least for this year, and next year, they'll be, we'll be back again to address this, it is part of the Southside Specific Plan Implementation. In your packet, I did give you an update on where we are with all the other amendments. And last week, you initiated a contract agreement to start the Plaza Vieja character plan. Transsext will also be a contract, and we have been talking, staff has been talking with on the resource protection kind of overlay stuff. But the Southside Specific Plan Implementation is a mantra of amendments. It's not just one amendment, it has many amendments. And this is just one of those in a list of Southside implementation tasks. So that's where it would fit in the work program. And some of the questions that we would like to reconsider is if whether the council would like to initiate to create the overlay, but also to move it up as part of the work program. We currently have done an RFQ, which is a Request for Qualifications. And we have selected a consultant for the Southside, and we have started the negotiations on them, on this, and they are aware of it and they are, they are the ones who gave us the cost estimate that's in your packet. So it's just a matter of, do we move it up in that workload as part of it? Do it one of the First Amendments or not? But it will be eventually if not, so. And on that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have from Mark or I.
Thank you. And do we have any public participants on this? Okay, just wanted to check. I have a question. So is there anything in this character overlay that they're looking for that is fundamentally different or couldn't, would not actually fit within the scope of the Southside Community Plan Implementation?
I don't believe so, but I would refer that to Mark.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. It certainly fits in with the Southside Plan and the input that was given on the values that they have there. It does it very well. When we're talking about a character overlay in historic preservation, I did show them the guidelines and standards for townsite. I think it's principally different, and I could see the mindset, talking to them, that it's more about adapting, preserving their qualities of their street frontage, those type of things. So when somebody says, you know, "Townsite's this type of overlay", I think this is principally going to be different. And I have written that down. I have discussed it with them. I think they have a understanding of what they'll be asking for, for design standards, and that it'll be clear and concise and not overly complicated. So I've been working on that. I have a lot of background information on that, particularly thinking about some of the ways I would change the reviews so they're clearer and they're based upon ten standards, guidelines and simple to understand in a very organized way. So we've made it that far, certainly having the consultants on board to provide some additional information, graphics and understanding how it would integrate with Southside Plan and with our ordinances that exist. That's very important to me as well, and to them.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Council, other, normally I have two computers, so I can look over the agenda at the same time as monitoring on there, but bumping back and forth. Council, any questions right now, or comments? Councilmember Solis?
Yeah, I am curious to find out if we receive any feedback from the Southside Neighborhood Association.
Mark will be able to answer that, but I do believe they were part of those meetings.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman. They have definitely, in their letter, and they have been to their meetings, and the Southside Association does endorse this overlay, so.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm trying to sort out in my mind what the implications of this would be. Would it be that there could be no significant new development in there? Or that, you know, there couldn't be any two stories? Or there would be architectural controls? Or what were the, in practical terms, what would be the effect if we ended up approving this designation?
Again, that, Mr. Mayor, Councilman McCarthy. I think the direction that it's going, that I got feedback from the community, was preserving the one and one-and-a-half-story structures for a certain depth, that look and feel of that, while allowing, a lot of the people are going, and there are examples down there where they've actually increased the height toward the back of the lot. That'd be like a principal difference between the townsite. Townsite has a primary structure and then smaller secondary structures in the back. So I think there's a desire to have that ability to fill up those lots that are there. Certainly, the Heritage Preservation Ordinance allows for demolitions and that process and development, and I think they're fully aware of that, and they know that that will take place. But preserving that quality is important to the community. It's important to the people that live there. Certainly, those focus areas are limited and were identified in the plan. There's lots of additional area where new development could take place in higher densities. And again, the Southside Plan called for that in certain areas. So in that overall scope of things, preserving residential qualities, accommodating larger developments in certain areas, I think that was clearly called out in the Southside Plan. So it's a large area with lots of opportunities to provide all sorts of housing as well as commercial development.
So I'm familiar with this area, and there's some houses there that have unique character. They're very interesting, and I could see why people would want to preserve them. But if I remember correctly, there's also some apartment dwellings which have a completely different style, shall we say? And I presume those would all be grandfathered in. But to build new structures similar to those would probably be out of the question if this passed, if I understand correctly.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, I don't think it's out of the question. Again, we're at a very beginning stage of that and how those guidelines are written. There's no intent to limit development in that area. It's establishing a character and how that's done. So that's public input from a developer standpoint, from residential standpoint, all the way through. So again, it's a So again, it's a limited, smaller area of an overlay versus the entire South Side.
And my last question is, and I don't know that we can answer that in this forum, but it would seem to me that if we're going to be putting restrictions on these properties, that there could be takings implications. And I see that the city attorney is staring at me.
[laughter]
So that's a question for a session, I presume.
Enough said, yep.
But I will just say that it's a concern of mine.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about these questions to consider. Are these, are these both just a matter of timing? One meaning, do we want to initiate now and create this overlay? Or do we want to, to have it kind of folded in with the, the community plan implementations?
Mayor members at the council, Vice Mayor Daggett, the, the questions are two-part. The, you would not be initiating it now, we would have to come back and do a formal initiation or get direction for that. You can provide direction, and the planning director could initiate. And that's kind of where we're at right now. It would be part of the South Side community plan, it's just a matter of, do we move it forward above other plan, other parts of the, the plan that we have to work on because it has a significant amount of community support already, whereas much, much of the other part implementation tasks of the South Side plan still need to go through that. We still have the plans' support, but the actual zoning part needs to go through that supportive effort. So this could be looked at as a easy check to get completed now, to show that we're continuing to move forward with the implementation of the South Side plan, so that by moving it forward sooner, it shows that our commitment that we keep going. Or do we delay it to be part of a larger group of amendments?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Others would like to chime in. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you so much, Dan and Mark, for your presentation, your work on this so far, and obviously appreciation to the community for their efforts and bringing this to us. I, I, I'm supportive, this is, this is tough, because on the one hand, I see, I have my values of sustainability and infill and vehicle mile, reducing vehicle miles traveled. And so where is there a better location for infill than the heart of the city? But then on the other hand, I, I appreciate the desires and the needs of the community members that live in this area, asking for their neighborhood to, to maintain its character and, and their core values. And so, Councilmember McCarthy, I appreciate your, your line of thought and your questioning. But I think ultimately, I, I side with the neighbors here, just because they're the ones living there and, and their neighborhood has been so, so beaten up at times throughout history. And, and so I think we should definitely support them. It's in the South Side a plan, like you, you've mentioned a few times, but, but I can't help but think about the sustainability, you know, component of my own values that, that are just kind of, you know, battling internally, and I just wanted to air that here. I don't really have many questions or, or comments. I'm happy to see this progress. And, and Dan, I just wanted to say, thank you for your service to our community. I've really enjoyed working with you. I don't know what your future looks like, and, and we're not going to get into that, but I just want to say it's really been an honor to work with you, and, and I so appreciate your service to the city for, for however much longer that might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. I do have one, one question, actually, regarding the 51% of the proper, property owners.
Yes.
So if, for example, somebody owns six lots, does it, is the 51% of each individual owner or each individual owner lot?
Each, each lot.
Okay.
It's each lot, so if one person owns six, that's six vote, one vote per lot.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I figured, I just wanted all clarification, so I understand.
We would not be able to proceed if we do not have that. In other words, we can do all the work, we can get there, but if, we cannot bring it to you for a, a vote or decision without that. So, so that's kind of, it helps with that assurance that the community is in support.
Gotcha. And that would be probably better to have that information before you really delve into it and use a lot of staff time, is what I'm gathering.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Councilman, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Shimonie's about sustainability. One of my absolute heroes, which I got to meet at the preservation conference recently, is Donovan Ripkema, and he does the economics of historic preservation and sustainability. And he's really somebody to follow to justify why intact neighborhoods are as efficient and as sustainable as they are. So I, I recommend looking up Donovan, Donovan, it's a strange name, but Donovan Ripkema is his name. And he's done studies all through neighborhoods, and those classical suggestions of why preservation doesn't work, he does counter those with very hard economic facts, so I, I recommend looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
So I see on the map, this little area in green that we call the WC Riles area, but I see that the map has got all kinds of other colors, reds and oranges and blues and turquoises. Do we anticipate that all of those areas will eventually be wanting to do essentially the same thing?
Yes and no. What the, what the South Side community plan strategic implementation guidelines or implementation policies that you all adopted say is to replace the, the transect and non-transsect zoning with a new zone that implements these specific areas. And then on top of that, you have the additional historic preservation elements that would go with that. So in, as outlined in the specific plans, eventually you, if it goes forward the way it's written in the plan, you will see a whole new zoning category in this area that's specific to South Side. Unlike other, because a lot of the zoning right now is the same zoning that you get in suburban areas applies here, or same commercial area zoning that's on, you know, I forget the name of it, Sunnyside also applies here. So that's one of the, the goals and policies and implementation strategies of the South Side plan, is to look at this as a larger whole and do those studies, and that's what we're bringing that consultant on to do. At least, that's the plan.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. All right, well, I'm happy to provide some feedback, but we'll open it up to others on the two questions, if you want to go to those for us to consider. And if anyone, nobody else is jumping in, I'll just say that if we do require 51%, we should get information from them that that is actually the neighborhood's intent as a majority before we move too heavily forward with the character overlay. So yes to the first question. And the second one, also a yes, I think that should, the character overlay should be included with our South Side community plan implementations as they are developed. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. Thank you both for working with the South Side community on this, and I am a yes on both. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Just to clarify, the second question, the way I read it is that we would just do this when we do the rest of the South Side issues, as opposed to bringing it forward faster. Is that correct?
I would recommend, Mayor, members of council, that if we have the support to do it now, to do it.
But my question is, what is the second question? Is the second question, do it with the plan, or is it to expedite it and push it forward?
It would be to expedite it, it would be to expedite.
So your, your interpretation is a yes to the second one would be expedite it now, get her done when the iron is hot?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Vice Mayor Daggett?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I am a yes on both, and if the community wants to see this done, then let's have this be one of the first things that's implemented in the South Side community plan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimonie?
Yes and yes, thank you.
All right, we do, we got a thumbs up from Councilmember Solis as well.
I'll be, I'll be a yes, yes.
All right, we do have consensus, so yeah, thank you for all your work on this, appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing how it develops.
Mayor, if I may summarize in general, it is to move forward with the initiation of these overlays, ensure that we have the 51% before we start actual work on it, and assuming that we have that 51% relatively quickly, we'll be starting that as the first part of the character overlay, the South Side community plan implementation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
I would like to ask the city attorney to have an e-session on this sometime, so we can discuss takings issues regarding this specific item.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy and council, I've made note of that, and we also, with this direction, we'll be looking at the entire overlay zone question, like I say, in its entirety, we'll advise you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. All right, thank you much. We're now down to agenda item number eight. This is the Transportation Commission findings regarding the recommended status of Woody Way to determine the status of Woody Way between Presidio and Boulder Point.
Good evening, Mayor and council. All right. All right, good evening, Mayor and council, Jeff Baumann, City Traffic Engineer, here this evening to talk to you about Woody Way Gate and the Transportation Commission deliberations on Woody Way Gate. I'm joined by the Chair of the Transportation Commission, Madam Chair, Julie Lee is here, she's going to help me with the presentation here and a few slides. So with that, we'll jump right in. Here's our vicinity map, Boulder Point neighborhood, I think most everybody's familiar, but Boulder Point neighborhood is on the east side, and the Presidio neighborhood is on the west, connected by Woody Way. Map's a little hard to see, but I think most everyone is pretty familiar. I think everyone's mostly familiar with Woody Way, but this is the Woody Way connection. I've got just a couple of notes to talk about the connection between the two neighborhoods, because we've talked more generally in the past, that the connection is supported by different parts of our regional plan, different parts of our zoning code, even the carbon neutrality plan applies to kind of the discussion this evening on keeping Woody Way open or not. So all of those plans support connectivity. Connectivity is good for shortening trips, which is kind of the carbon neutrality plan connection, but also, we've talked about shortening trips and making our road network more efficient forever and ever, so that's not a new concept. It also makes emergency services and maintenance operations more efficient, tends to connect neighborhoods better. You know, if you make this separation, you tend to have two kind of cul-de-sac neighborhoods. So it's just a cou, excuse me, a couple of thoughts on that. We'll jump right in. Here's a little background in history. We have a picture up there that is Woody Way looking towards Boulder Point, and the next picture looks towards the Presidio. Boulder Point built the first piece, and then Presidio built that second piece connecting. There was a gate installed based on the development agreement from the Presidio development. And the gist of the, the reason for the gate was, we thought the Presidio development would start up right away, and people in Boulder Point were concerned that construction traffic would be cutting through the neighborhood. So there is a gate installed, development agreement talked about a certain time when the gate would be removed. Great recession occurred, Presidio didn't really happen on a normal timeframe, it sat for a number of years. Eventually, a new developer picked up the development, and the city, that, that timeframe had already passed, so if we had followed the develop, original development agreement, the gate would have been removed, but we wouldn't have been able to avoid the construction traffic. So the city said, we'll wait until 90% of the units are occupied in Presidio, and we'll still commit to doing the before and after studies. So that's where we're at now. The gate was removed in April of 2020. In the past year, we've received a couple of citizen petitions, and this is a kind of a summary of those. First citizen petition came in April of 21 and asked to close Woody Way. Transportation Commission reviewed that request and recommended that Woody Way remain open. City council received a second petition, and that's what we're kind of talking about tonight, or the continuation of that second petition, which was in September of 21. You asked that the Transportation Commission take on this item, which was kind of an ongoing item with them already, and they have done that, they've had a couple of meetings, and we're here tonight to talk about what the Transportation Commission is recommending for the status of Woody Way, and looking for your input and direction so we can move forward with that. Since the last time we talked, we've done a little bit of, a question that kept coming up from the neighborhoods and, and for us as well, who's using this road? What are the reasons for people going back and forth? We don't necessarily know the reasons, but we know where they're coming from and where they're going to, and we can, we can estimate what their reasons are. So we have a subscription to a service called Streetlight, nothing to do with streetlights, it's cell phone data, so it's cell phone location data, metro plan, mountain line in the city, all joined in on this. So basically, this company aggregates location data from cell phones and anonymizes it, but then it creates a huge database so we can go in and figure out where trips start and end, how long they take, what routes they take. It'll be more clear when we look at some maps, kind of the data that comes out of that. But we took a look at the data, and this is the time period that we picked, the most recent month that was available, normal weekdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and broke it down by three peak periods. So this is our first map, we had a series of maps, and they all kind of look similar, but I'll walk through this one, I'll walk through all of them, but we'll go kind of slow through this one to make sure it all makes sense. So everything's color coordinated, and the size of the arrows kind of correspond to the number of trips. So the first thing at the top right, trips originating in the Presidio, so trips that start kind of in this area of the Presidio are green. So in order to be a green trip, start in the Presidio, pass through Woody Way, and then exit either on University or Highland Mesa. So you can see in the AM peak period for those eastbound trips, that's 94% of the people traveling on Woody Way. The blue color are trips that start external or further to the west of Presidio, so somewhere on Woody, Woody Mountain Road, pass through Woody Way, and then end up in Boulder Point. So they have a destination in Boulder Point, and that month, zero trips doing that. And then this is kind of the classic cut-through, is external to external, that's usually what we're doing, what, that's usually what we're concerned with, with a cut-through kind of analysis. So red trips start somewhere west of Woody Mountain Road, pass through Woody Way, pass through, you know, pass through the Presidio, Woody Way, Boulder Point, and then end up somewhere further to the east. And that was 6% of the trips in the morning. So you can see most of the trips in the morning going eastbound are originating in Presidio. Actually, a pretty similar pattern, I won't go through all the numbers, but a pretty similar pattern for eastbound, midday, midday was 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, but you can see 84% of that first type, 0% stopping at Boulder Point, and then we're up to 16%, so we have a little higher percentage of people cutting through, not having a destination or an origin in either neighborhood. And finally, the PM peak period for eastbound, still the highest percentage are trips originating in Presidio and heading to the west, or I'm sorry, heading to the east through Woody Way, two people with destinations in Boulder Point, and our cut-through, typical cut-through is up to 23% in the evening, probably people coming from a work destination or something like that. coming from a work destination or something like that off to the west. Then we have the opposite, not as dramatic, and actually flips a little bit with the percentages. So this is the morning going westbound. So same kind of thing. Green trips start external to Boulder Point, work their way through Boulder Point, Woody Way, and end up in Presidio. That's 40% of the trips. 0% start in Boulder Point and pass through, and 60% are actually external cut throughs. High percentage, not a huge number, 34 on average over four hours, but there are, but there are some. Here's what our midday looks like. Splits are 71, 2, and 27 for the external cut throughs. Kind of follow-up pattern, so I'll go a little bit quicker. And there's the PM peak. 81%, 1%, and 19%. So fairly consistent, and we have a summary slide as well. We can pause there if there's any questions about this particular information. This is new. We presented this to the Transportation Commission two weeks ago.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions at this time? All right, please proceed.
I'll keep going. So we also took a look. This was a question that had been coming up, you know, why are people probably driving through these neighborhoods? Well, a lot of trip-making characteristics are determined by time, and you can see here through the different time periods that the trips going through Woody Way are quicker than the trips on Route 66. So the blue trip and the orange trip both originate about the center of the Presidio neighborhood. We picked the Dog Park, and we just picked the destination to the east Walmart. So the orange trip is about three miles. The blue trip was about two miles. So that's part of our carbon neutrality plan. You know, it's only a mile difference, but we're going to have to do a lot of things to make up some VMT ground. So you can see that the trips, except for the one westbound trip in the morning, are always quicker going through the neighborhood. It's both shorter and probably less congested than the Route 66 and Woodlands Village routing. So this is a question people had asked, so we just took a look. Here's one more summary of eastbound, and this is kind of showing the splits. The first number is the AM. The second number is the midday, and the third number is the PM. So you can, you can see those splits for eastbound on Woody Way, and you can see the splits for westbound on Woody Way. And here we go. So here's the options that we've been considering with the Transportation Commission. So obvious, leave Woody Way open. Second obvious, close Woody Way. We've looked at making Woody Way an eastbound or westbound one-way street. Prohibiting parking on both sides of Woody Way. Currently, parking is prohibited only on the south side. It's a fairly narrow street, acts a bit like a queuing street, so people have to take turns driving in both directions. Typically, we like queuing streets to slow people down because they have to think about. It's not wide open. In this case, we've measured speeds are pretty low. They're well under 20 miles per hour. So removing parking is probably not going to change that much, so not, so in this case, we're, we're fine with removing parking. Actually, it's part of our recommendation. Install traffic calming in the vicinity of Woody Way. That was something the Transportation Commission wanted us to take a look at, and we'll look at a couple of options for that. And then make Axandle, one, Axhandle, University Avenue loop one way. And now it's your turn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We've spent a couple of years discussing and deliberating this topic and listening to residents in both Presidio and Boulder Point. And our recommendation to council is to leave Woody Way open. We've reviewed the subdivision plots for both Presidio and Boulder Point and their right-of-way dedication. We've had staff collect data, and the Commission has reviewed that data on multiple occasions. And like I said before, we have listened to public input over multiple meetings, in addition to receiving and reviewing written comments outside of those meetings. So our recommendation is based on these things, that there is no reduction of level of service or resulting in intersections operating at or below a tolerable threshold for congestion. The volumes are low. The designation of Woody Way as a public street maintained by the citizens of Flagstaff for the unexclusive use for the traveling public regardless of their destination or origin. It is a public street. Another reason, the emergency services response time, and there is also comments about bus, bus time being able to bus students and that connection. Based on the comments that we have heard from the community, it seems that we may have a public safety issue, not limited to just Boulder Point, but also in Presidio, by the general traveling public and residents and neighbors of both of these neighborhoods. This public safety issue has been described as speeding and disregard for the stop sign. So the regional plan speaks about both connectivity and safety in the transportation and land use sections. And these, these should not be competing values. So there's, there's a problem that we have that needs a definition so that we can have a targeted solution. And that, that, that problem is the public safety issue that I just described, that the Transportation Commission has been discussing. So we asked staff to consider traffic mitigation in the immediate area, and they've come up with some great ideas. Those are the ideas that were presented to us just recently, a couple, a couple of weeks ago. And some of these ideas are our first-time implementations in Flagstaff that Jeff is going to share with you. So these ideas were presented to us on December 2nd, and commissioners were in full support of moving forward. I want to note that the recommendation from the Transportation Commission was unanimous and unwavering. Oh, and I know you'd be disappointed if I didn't do my usual plug, and I don't want to disappoint you. So we do have an opening on Transportation Commission, so I encourage those that are listening and interested, please send in your application for review. Thank you.
Thank you.
And here's a couple of the pieces of mitigation that we've been discussing with the Transportation Commission. So we heard some concerns from actually this, this residence. This is looking directly across from Highland Mesa onto Axhandle, so maybe the aerial photo's best. So looking straight across to here, we know we had a vehicle, I believe it was last winter, not sure. There's a little bit of gray on Highland Mesa. There was probably some snow on the ground, and they slid into kind of the curb and over the curb here. So something that we've considered and we're comfortable with, and these are maybe a little bigger than what we'd actually do, but some sort of landscape boulders along this section of parkway to provide a little more separation between the sidewalk and, I suppose, the home even, in this case, from vehicles that could slide down Highland Mesa. So this is one piece of mitigation that we've considered and that we're recommending, the Transportation Commission's recommending. This is another piece of mitigation and calming. So there's two things going on here. The picture on the right is the first and easiest thing to look at. Normally, at local, local intersections, we don't install stop bars, we don't install crosswalks, and we don't install centerline markings because they're just local, local intersections. A lot of times, they're yield control, sometimes stop control, sometimes there's no signs at all. We've heard concerns that vehicles are cutting the corner, turning left and turning right around these corners. We've heard concerns that people are running the stop sign, which we've seen in other places as well. But this could provide some increased visibility and hopefully better behavior in this vicinity. So stop bar, crosswalk, and double yellow centerline. And then the, the big enhancement that we've worked with Public Works on a bit, and they're willing to give this a shot in this area, is to actually implement raised crossings. So these are, these look a little abrupt. These look, look a little more like a speed hump to me, but the idea is, is, is sound. So raised crossings, so that would be here at the intersection of Highland Mesa and Axhandle. And then talking through the Transportation Commission, and we had some public input on December 1st, they're recommending at all three intersections. So Highland Mesa and Axhandle, Woody Way and Axhandle on the Boulder Point end, that's Woody Way, Axhandle and Woody Way, and Mission Timber is on the Presidio side. So three intersections worth of raised crossings. And here's a summary of the Transportation Commission's recommendations for mitigation.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy has a question?
Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm slow. Could you again go over the three intersections that would have the raised crosswalk? Obviously, that one right there on the picture, and then what were the other two?
The both ends of Woody Way.
Thank you.
Axhandle end and the Mission Timber end, yeah.
I appreciate that.
No problem. And here's just a summary of the mitigation proposals. So boulders in the parkway, not as big as what's shown in that picture. Raised crosswalks, raised crossings at the T-intersections, all three, striping stop bars and double yellow centerlines, and removing the parking on Woody Way. And not listed because it's not a mitigation, but of course, the Commission is recommending keeping Woody Way open.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Here I am again. I don't understand the idea behind taking parking off Woody Way. As you already mentioned, if parking is allowed there, that will tend to slow the cars down, which is, seems to be one of the primary objectives. And also, you know, taking parking off there is not going to reduce the amount of traffic that goes through there. So both the number of vehicle trips and the speed don't seem to lead to the idea of getting rid of parking. Can you comment to that?
Sure. Thank you for the question and the good observation, because yeah, typically, we wouldn't recommend removing parking if we're concerned about speeds, but because speeds are fairly low on this segment of Woody Way, we're not concerned if there is a small increase. I agree with you completely. We shouldn't see any change in volumes. This was a request that kept coming up from the public and had little harm, if any harm, so we are recommending it. But it's, it's probably the weakest recommendation of all of these because we really could go either way. But we consistently hear, oh, it's, but that's good, right? In traffic calming world, we hear, oh, it's congested, it's uncomfortable driving through there, remove all the parking. Typically, not what we want to do, but in this case, I don't think we're going to see really any impact, and it is a fairly narrow street for the volume. So we're comfortable with it, but yeah, not what we typically recommend, so good observation.
Thank you. I have Vice Mayor with a question, and just so everyone knows, we have a couple speaker cards, and I want to get to those before we start a full discussion amongst council. But Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. I have a couple of questions. Are you aware of, of other neighborhoods that have this kind of through traffic? I mean, I know that we hear from a lot of neighborhoods about, about speeding and other issues, but is there another one that comes to mind that has this kind of traffic volume?
Yes, we have many, we have many streets with this type of volume of 900, I think. You know, University Avenue, just in this neighborhood, further to the east, has two or three times this level of traffic. Roads like Linda Vista, four, five, six times as much traffic, though they are, they look different on the cross-section, but they're also roads with houses fronting them. Recent Transportation Commission items, Mount Pleasant in the Country Club area is about 600 vehicles a day, so it's a little bit lower. Also have concerns about speeds, not volumes in that case, speeds. But yeah, 900 is not, 900 is higher than we like to see on a local street. It's right at that threshold where people typically start complaining about traffic because right about 1,000. But we have many, many roads with higher volumes than this.
Okay. And you're proposing a raised crosswalk, but if I recall correctly, you, you were not in favor of speed bumps on the street, and I think that was a snow plowing issue? And, and I guess that raised crosswalks aren't a snow plowing issue?
Yes, we've spent quite a bit of time with the Public Works and Streets crews, and they're willing to give these a chance in this location. There's, we, you might want to ask them for their more direct opinion or response to this, but basically, in this location, with the type of vehicles that they use to plow these neighborhoods, they're willing to give this a chance to see what we can do, understanding that we've tried many things in this area. They're willing to give it a shot. It's, you know, it will slow down emergency service vehicles, it will slow down, it'll slow down everybody, but it'll slow down emergency services, it'll slow down plowing, sweeping operations. It is an impediment, but they are willing to give this a shot here. But they're very clear, it's not, hey, Jeff, go install 400 of these next week. It's, we're willing to try this one setup here.
Okay. And then I have one last question, and that is, I don't, I don't even know whether this is something that is possible, and I'm guessing not, or you would have suggested it, but are there additional treatments that can lower the speed limit anymore, like a school zone that lowers it down to 15 miles an hour? Are there, are there any areas where some sort of treatment like that would be, where we'd be able to use it? And what do you think about that?
So school zone that you mentioned is very specific and, you know,
Right.
has specific criteria with the school and number of kids and all those different things. Speeds on Woody Way are actually below 20, so they're actually really well behaved. Our speed studies show on Woody Way and even on this piece of Highland Mesa that speeds are not really an issue here. I mean, this is some of the lowest speeds we ever record. Volumes are really the issue. So we haven't been focusing on speeds so much, but we have had complaints about people not behaving properly or as well as we'd like in those intersections, and we think maybe some more concentration on those raised crossings will help get people a little more organized. So it's kind of speed through the intersection, people just not paying enough attention to the way they're driving and behaving in their own neighborhoods, as opposed to wide-open speed, which is what we normally are concerned with.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? Yeah.
Really quick follow-up. Thank you, Jeff. Just curious, what's the volume of cut-through traffic in like La Plaz Vieja, for example?
We, we have never done this type of study. We, we could. We have the tools and resources. We could definitely look into it. I don't know.
Okay, no worries. And I'm not necessarily asking that we do, but go, go ahead.
The, the volume on Clay Avenue is much higher than 900, but I don't know what the cut-through volume is. I would suspect it's higher, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
It was good to hear your, your references that Vice Mayor asked about, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And I think with that, we can move on to public participation. And then Councilmember Aslan, I do see your comments for it, so you'll be first in line queued up after public participation. All right. We will start with Brian Lee Wilson, and then followed by Cynthia Decker.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd also like to thank you to the staff and the Transportation Commission for the thoughtful analysis and proposals we've been hearing about today. I'm going to defer to other owners to comment on those items in particular, but I'd like to make a comment about the future. I remember wording a council member used in an earlier meeting when the council was directing staff and Transportation Commission to study this matter further. He requested a quote holistic approach. I agree that, that that's important. Going back more than 15 years ago, everybody knew that traffic would increase after opening the gate. Early traffic counts were taken a couple of quarters after COVID restrictions were loosened, but still, keep in mind that some of the nearby traffic generators were still operating at reduced capacity. So even under those conditions, traffic on Woody Way was already 67% higher than the forecast that was originally built into the development. Recent focus has been to address high-traffic volumes on Axhandle and speeding traffic on University. But a holistic approach would also evaluate other issues, for example, further east on Highland Mesa. Traffic volumes there have increased by a larger percent than they have on University Avenue, and residents there are also already seeing excessive speeds and reckless driving. Recently, a high-speed intoxicated driver failed to make the curb at 1:15 in the morning. He jumped the curb, totaled his truck, and took out the owner's two vehicles parked in their driveway. That's worse than the type of great dangerous incidents we're addressing on Axhandle. So with substantial development continuing to the west, dangerous driving will continue to grow in Boulder Point. We need to be We need to be ready and willing to continue to regularly measure traffic volumes and speeds and address problems on other streets in Boulder Point as they continue to grow. These are excellent first steps today, but they will not resolve all the growing problems. We plan to continue to work with staff and the Transportation Commission to address these new issues, and we'll update the city council periodically. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Brian. And Cynthia? Daker?
Hello, Council. So, I'm a resident of Presidio. I also like to point out, I'm also an EMT for Guardia Medical Transport, so driving through neighborhoods is part of my job. And I just want to say, I actually love the idea that the Transportation Commission has actually pushed through. As an EMT, I would have to say, as far as like the driving, speeding, the failure to stop is a huge thing, even being a part of Presidio. I see it all the time for Boulder Point, and I do feel for that community as well, because I see it in a lot of other places as well. And I think having those raised sidewalk, sorry, crosswalks and the stop signs, I think, are huge in helping us slow down some of that traffic. As that too, I'm also a cyclist, so I bike around town a lot too, and I do use Woody Way a lot for that area. And I know one of the points of, like, removing all parking out of that road is kind of been like, why would we do that? And as a resident that uses, and a cyclist that uses that, my biggest problem having parking on that north side has been the blind view. There have been a couple of times where I've actually been concerned about going head-on with somebody, not just in my vehicle, but as a cyclist, because the vehicle that's there typically is a very large Ford, and I don't have a good line of sight over that truck as a cyclist. So, there are times where even if they are going, you know, 10, 15 miles an hour at that area, I'm still going to go up against a very large car, and I've seen, unfortunately, how, what that can do sometimes, even if it's just road rash. So, I would like counsel to, I, I think, long-term, having that consideration in other places is huge, because I do use those areas too. I do go down Highland Mesa Road. I do use Woody Way and Route 66. I do go down University Avenue. Whether it's for my personal car or if it's as an EMT, if you guys did consider having to do it one-way, I think having it going from Boulder Point to Presidio one-way is the best suggestion, I would say, because as an EMT, when I've had to run calls into that area, I can certainly say that that has always been my fastest access to people on that kind of west end of the community. And just something to consider, that if a gate was to be put in, and I did have a call in Presidio, I have to take so much more time now to not be able to just cut down through Woody Way, to get to maybe somewhere off, you know, Highland Mesa or another neighborhood down the road. I now have to go all the way around to actually get to that person if that was to be a case. Now, the chances of that probably are, I can't give you those answers, but just something to consider, that I, as an EMT responder, we do have that. It does matter for some of us on that response time, or just having another access in and out of the community is huge for us, so.
Thank you, Cynthia. We actually have a question for you from Councilmember McCarthy.
Yeah, in all honesty, it's more of a comment. I just want to thank you for your rational reason on why we should get rid of parking on that street. You made a very rational argument. Thank you. And maybe you should apply for the Transportation Commission seat.
Oh, I've got a full-time job as it is. It's a lot of work already.
Thank you for the rational explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. I really appreciate your perspective on this.
Thank you.
With that, I'll go to the online participants, if you'd like to queue them up.
We have Kim Tittlebaugh on the line. You can go ahead and unmute.
Thank you, Mayor Deasy, and council members for the opportunity to speak. I am here tonight on behalf of the Presidio in the Pines Homeowners Association and the Board of Directors. The board has been following this issue very closely and supports the recommendation of the Transportation Commission to keep Woody Way open and install the traffic mitigation measures noted tonight in all three areas, all three intersections that they presented. Just to reiterate a few points that have been raised here tonight, as well as in previous meetings, that Woody Way has always been intended to serve as secondary emergency access and connectivity for both neighborhoods. And with the availability, availability of land being limited and higher densities, it's really important to keep that connectivity, to distribute traffic volumes, and provide for the emergency ingress and egress for both subdivisions. And with that, we just continue to support what the Transportation Commission has done and the ideas that they have presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next individual?
Hi, my name is Andrew. I live in Presidio, and I do agree with a lot of the Transportation Commission's recommendations, especially possibly installing the raised crosswalks. But some of the things I, seems to be a concern to me is the community's false sense of security because of a, a gate. It seems that a lot of people have, seem to have lowered their, what's the term I'm looking for? They seem that this, this gate seems to be a safety for them, and, um, that's really all I have to say, other than that. I like the Transportation Board's recommendation, so.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Next participant, please?
That was all we had.
All right. Well, with that, I'll turn it back into council discussion. I did, I did have one question, actually, before we get into comments. We'll kick it to Councilmember Aslan. How many parking spots are we talking about right there?
I'm not entirely sure, but let's look at the picture, look at the map. So, one, two, maybe 10?
10?
At 10 at most, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there a question?
I just want to kind of follow up. I live a block and a half from here. So, and I walk by through this intersection frequently. There is often two trucks parked there, and one in particular is there almost all the time, but I don't think I've ever seen more than two vehicles parked on that street.
Okay.
Even though we probably could get maybe up to 10 or so, that, that seems a little high, but something in that ballpark, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I will send it to Councilmember Aslan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry I'm not there right now for the, for the conversation, but I am definitely present and here, ready to have this discussion. And this is not easy. I'm going to go ahead and set the tone by just, you know, being totally straightforward with everybody on both sides of this, literally on both sides of, of Woody Way. I'm completely open still to closing that gate. The presentation and the research and analysis that's been done is very, very helpful, and it troubles me more than I've, than I've been troubled before. You know, and, and I, I speak this, this truth from my heart, full well knowing that our Transportation Commission has offered its unanimous vote of support for keeping the road open. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into that, the deliberation that went into that, and all the things that have been considered for making that recommendation. And I suspect it will probably win out at the end of the evening here today. Regardless, I hope that we can continue to keep a pulse on this and maintain a long view and revisit this as often as necessary. Can we go back to figure number seven? Slide number 13. It's the one that has the, the westbound and eastbound summaries on them.
I'm sorry, what was the number?
Figure seven.
Figure seven, got it.
Thank you so much. So, I, I like how this, this adds a couple of the previous slides together. It sort of provides just a overall picture. We have 800 total trips going through Woody Way from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That's a 13-hour period. If you divide 800 by 13, what you come up with is exactly one car per minute all day long, from morning through lunch, through the afternoon, well into the evening. One car per minute going either one direction or the other on Woody Way. I don't think the residents signed up for that. That is not a, a neighborhood connectivity issue. This, this is a small neighborhood street. It's narrow. We can't even fit parked cars on both sides of it. And we're talking about a car per minute all day long passing through here. And the other, I wanted to just visit with this concept, it's the same page, so we can stay in figure seven. If you look at who is experiencing the burden of this connectivity, it is entirely Boulder Point. 1.5% of the traffic that is represented on this, on these two tables, on these tables here reflect upon traffic going into Boulder Point or traffic going out of Boulder Point. Boulder Point is receiving 98.5% of the through traffic throughout the day, that, and where this is happening. So, I mean, we're talking about volume, and this just totally speaks volumes to me. I, I'm not satisfied with any of these solutions. I am, I'm not trying to pick sides. I'm not trying to get cute with Presidio. I certainly don't mean to feel bigoted, as was pointed out in a very nasty Graham email that I received from a Presidio resident. But this, this issue is a concern that is being entirely shouldered by the Boulder Point community at the leisure of the Presidio community. So, I'm, I mean, I, I, I just want to sit with that for a minute. I think that's, that's incredible. One car per minute all day long, going back and forth, and 99 out of 100 of those cars are coming from Presidio and passing through Boulder Point or passing through Boulder Point to return to Presidio. This is an issue that is, that far exceeds the sum of its parts. This is a problem that is greater than the mathematical data analysis provides. And I'm, I, I don't, I don't know what to do. I still don't know what to do. But I, I just want to let council know as an opening bid that I am perfectly comfortable with the consideration that we close this gate. That street was never meant to be for commuter traffic passing at the expense of one community only. And one, one of the, one of the speakers mentioned how this will get worse. I, I believe that that is a correct assessment. With the increased development to the west, this, this is a problem that is only going to increase. And the reason it's a problem is because a neighbor, a quiet neighborhood street is being used as a commuter throughway. And we can't just simply look at the sum of the math on this when we're considering the headache and the impact and the quality of life impact that this has on the residents in the impacted neighborhood. So, I'll, I'll leave it there for now. I, I'd love to be a part of the conversation as it continues, but this just speaks really loudly to me. This is a big problem. It is shouldered entirely by one community, and it is only going to get worse. We need a different solution.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. I understand we actually do have one more public commenter. If we can queue that up, and then we'll continue our discussion.
We have Mike on the line. You could go ahead and unmute and share video if you'd like. Mike, you are still muted. The unmute should be on the upper right-hand side of your screen.
Agree with this. Need to unmute for us to hear you.
Mike, you should be able to unmute your phone now. Mike, you should be able to press star six to unmute your phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Please go ahead.
Okay. I, yeah, I, I really appreciate it. Apologies for the technical difficulties. The City of Flagstaff's opening of Woody Way and ongoing push to keep it open is untenable. It endangers public safety, decreases the quality of life in our neighborhood, it devalues our homes, and it stonewalls the legitimate grievances being raised by residents. Woody Way needs to be closed immediately and permanently to vehicular through traffic, while remaining open to pedestrians, bikes, and for emergency access. There are two factors that should weigh most heavily in your decision. Foremost should be the public safety issues being raised by residents. The City of Flagstaff's policies are endangering citizens in their homes, yards, and streets, and causing damage to private and public property. The ongoing failure to recognize this by city staff and council, I think, is negligent. The second factor and the root of the problems that I think we have is whether or not the opening of Woody Way meets municipal code, specifically Title 13, the engineering standards. I'd argue that very plainly, it does not. The City of Flagstaff is not following its own codes for street design based on accepted engineering standards and criteria. Here are a few of the main problems. There are many more. According to City Code, through traffic in residential areas, quote, "shall be carried on arterial and collector streets." Woody Way generates 1,000 cars a day of through traffic on local streets in Boulder Point. Two, Flagstaff has a regional circulation plan. That's 13-10-14. Woody Way invalidates this plan for the entire west side of Flagstaff by creating an alternative to Route 66 through neighborhoods and on streets explicitly not designed or designated for this traffic. Three, Woody Way does not meet any established design criteria for a street carrying 1,000 vehicles a day and causes other streets like Ax Handel and Highland Mesa to exceed their design capacities as well. Residential traffic is bad. Increasing it on purpose is also bad. Accidents are bad. Design criteria are good. Engineered roads are good. Traffic planning is good, and the circulation plan is good. It is frustrating, at this point, almost 20 months after opening, that I have to argue before the mayor, city council, traffic engineer, and Transportation Commission that increasing traffic in the heart of an established residential area using a classic bottleneck on under-designed local streets is a bad idea. All of this was all- All of this was already well-established engineering and science a long time ago, and it's codified in the laws of Flagstaff. We've proved it again, and all at the expense of all the citizens that are appealing to council for redress of grievances. Finally, I have a reasonable expectation that the City of Flagstaff, without my intervention, provide infrastructure in a manner that promotes the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to minimize public and private losses due to the failure of infrastructure in the City of Flagstaff." And that's thirteen dash one dash one. Multiple vehicles wrecking off of an underdesigned local street.
Thank you, Mike. Could you?
...private property because of the City of Flagstaff is a clear failure of that infrastructure.
Thank you, Mike.
...and governance. Thank you.
All right, council, with that, we will continue to open it up for discussion amongst ourselves, so. Don't know what John Fattman wants. Councilmember.
Well, I wanted to add one more thought.
Hold on, Councilmember Aslan, I wanted to get Councilmember Shimoney to call the pod.
And thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to let you go first, Councilmember Aslan, but I'll go ahead and just go really quick, and we'll circle back around to you. I want to thank staff and the commissions and this lead for your leadership and communication and efforts on this topic. I want to thank the public for your engagement and support of us. Cynthia, your comments have definitely shaped my opinion about the parking, as Councilmember McCarthy spoke to. Because at first I was also thinking, throw the damn car, we need more cars on that road to slow down traffic. And now I'm thinking, for the sake of safety and visibility, maybe we should prohibit parking. Jeff, a couple of questions for you. You know, on that same line, a thought of visibility and congestion and slowing vehicles down, would it make sense, so something I saw in Portland and Eugene is at neighborhood intersections, they would basically indent the curb to basically create that narrow feel, almost like as if cars were parked on either side. Are there further mitigations that we could potentially consider? You see how those curves are kind of, they open up as you turn? Like, maybe we should almost bring those back in and tighten it even further. Would that make any sense in your mind?
Yes, I mean, there's certainly other mitigation measures that we could consider here. I think what you're talking about, when you said indent, you threw me off, but I think you're, I'm using my cursor. So, bringing the curb out, I'm exaggerating, but bringing the curb out, so curb extensions or bump outs, okay. They are an option. I don't know how far we could go here, because the road is fairly narrow already. But typically, you can go out as far as a parked car, and it would work. But in this case, if we did that, we'd be back to the one-lane road. But it's a consideration, I mean, that's a traffic calming technique to narrow to a single lane. Something we could look at, we'll have to, we would have to go through, you know, fire equipment turning, plow turning, just go through all those typical checks to see if it's possible. But, I mean, it's possible, but we just have to look through it. But yeah, that's a consideration here.
Just a thought that had come to mind as we were talking about this. Another thought was like a roundabout, like we have in La.
You're done talking, Shimoney.
I'm happy to answer any questions if council has any questions. Please, city attorney, if I can continue, I'm just kidding. One of the perks of being elected, right? Anyways, a good reminder to keep it short and brief, though. Roundabouts, I know can be expensive. I don't even know if we have the width here to even, you know, potentially consider one, like we do in La Plaza Vieja. Is that something that you've looked into?
Same considerations. We did look at some circles here, and they would have to be really, really small or completely mountable to get the vehicles through. These intersections are pretty small, these are quite a bit smaller than Plaza Vieja intersection. So, we did look at it, we could do them, but I mean, they'd be very small, so not, they weren't recommended for that reason.
Okay, and yeah, I know that this intersection and these roads are really thin as it is. I do wonder if there still is value, even if it's a small circle, assuming people don't cut through but go around it. It does force the driver to kind of, you know, really kind of circle around rather than do like a sharp angle trying to cut time. But I do trust you and our commission's leadership and recommendation in regards to what's best. Yeah, I think, you know, public safety is definitely a big concern of mine here, and I want to make sure that we address it. I don't know if that means closing the corridor or making it a one-way, at least as a first step of mitigation here. I do like the mitigations you've outlined. I do wonder if the speed bump or the crossing, what was that? Raised crossing, thank you, is actually worthwhile, I'm happy to explore it. But from what I've heard, those don't really do a whole lot, other than maybe raise awareness of that crossing. But we can try, and I do really like the speed bars, or the stop bars, excuse me. I think that's a really good idea, and the boulders. So in regards to the boulders, I see, you know, where the red circles are on the left side of that map. But I'm assuming on that bottom corridor that's cutting, going, you know, left and going north, I believe that is, would the same boulders be util, like, of value on that, you know, the property right there? Yeah.
So, the boulder suggestion came from the resident that lives, I believe, lives in this house. So, that was how our recommendation came about for those boulders. And we understand there had been a vehicle that slid across. We haven't had any reports of any of the other directions being an issue. It's something we could consider, we'd want to coordinate. Often people, you know, that is public right-of-way, but often the adjacent resident likes the landscape and utilize that area. So they may be opposed to the concept, but we certainly could make contact and see if someone would be interested in that. But we haven't heard a concern, and so, you know, did not address it.
Gotcha.
But we could, that's a potential.
I was just wondering, you know, just thinking of traffic, I feel like the issue is probably relevant to both of those, you know, points. But regardless, I'm fine just with the current plan as well, if that's what makes most sense, at least in the short term. Two last questions. Do we have any crash data from these intersections?
We do, and I don't have those slides in this presentation, I cut that out. We had heard about, I'm trying to remember, there were very few, I probably should just try to find the slide while you're talking. But we had heard about lots of crashes, we looked, there weren't many, there were a couple. We had heard about the stop sign being knocked down a number of times, and we did get, we talked to streets, and they said, yes, it was knocked down once last year. And that's this stop sign on Highland Mesa at Ax Handle. So, there wasn't a pattern of issues, they were, the crashes were, I think there was one or two, you know, sliding on ice, hitting curb, that kind of thing. There's no injuries or anything close to an injury from my recollection. If you'd like, I can try to find it, but yeah, we have looked through the crashes with the commission, I just didn't give you that level of detail.
That's fine, and I don't need the follow-up, that's helpful, just those quick insights. And then my last comment is, in regards to signage, maybe just enhanced signage would be helpful. You know, I don't know what that looks like, flashing stop signs, or, I don't know, you know, something about, you know better than what I know in regards to what's possible. But I can imagine maybe improved signage could potentially be a low-barrier or low-hanging fruit, you know, solution in addition to what we're talking about. And I appreciate what Councilmember Aslan spoke to, especially, you know, quiet neighborhood street being used as a thorough way. And council, if we do go down that path, I support it, I just ask that we do it through a equity lens, lens of equity in our community. There's a lot of neighborhood roads that are being utilized as throughways. And yeah, I don't want it to start, you know, picking and choosing randomly, but really looking at that more holistically. So, Councilmember Aslan, I see you're nodding your head, and maybe that's a fair item or something that we could talk about later is a city-wide discussion around, you know, traffic issues through neighborhoods. But again, gratitude to staff and the commission and the community for working on these mitigation strategies. I think that they're good. I'm curious to see how they work once implemented and what the community's feedback will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple points. About fifteen years ago, I was in the audience out there, long before I was on council. And city council had this exact discussion. And the decision was that they would, as Jeff pointed out before, that they would open up Woody Way after, basically, the construction phase was over, without getting into the details. So, what's the significance of that? Well, in effect, council promised at that point that this would be open. And the people in Presidio bought houses based on that assumption. So I really am hesitant to reverse a decision that was made. And I'm not sure it was a unanimous decision, I think it was, but it was definitely a council decision. And that was a promise to the people that bought homes in Presidio. I'll also say that that street was there, although gated, when I bought my house, my first house in Boulder Point, twenty years ago. So, it was there, I knew about it, when I bought my house and built a brand-new house there. Let's talk about cut-through traffic. La Plaza Vieja has a big problem with cut-through traffic. We didn't close any of their streets. We put in roundabouts. Now, I would like to mention that the Transportation Commission, and I don't know if it's completely final, but Jeff, you could probably tell me, or Julie, that they're suggesting, or will be, putting a roundabout in on University at Tomball, which is what, half a mile or so east of where we're talking about here. So, that roundabout will be going in, and that will slow traffic down, and it will discourage people from going through there, because it's another, what I call an orifice, a restriction. So when you add restrictions, it has some impact in cutting down flow, traffic flow in this case. The other thing I can say is that just recently, there's been two signs added on University, just east of this location, that measure your speed. And if you're going over twenty-five miles an hour, they flash at you and say, "Slow down, slow down, slow down." So those have just gone in, in both directions, one in each direction. As you probably know, I'm the council liaison to the Transportation Commission. And I sat through all these meetings and listened to all the public input and all the considered debate amongst the transportation commissioners. So, in summary, out of respect for the Transportation Commission, and because I believe they came up with a rational decision, I support all of the points that the Transportation Commission came up with. At first, I was skeptical about the get rid of the parking, but we had a good speaker on that subject tonight. I do think that the raised walkways across in three locations will, again, they will slow people down a little bit and discourage them from using this route. So, in summary, I support all of the recommendations made by the Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sals?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to provide a space and time to express my gratitude to each member of the Tourism Commission and Councilmember McCarthy for your vigorous work on this matter. And I heard that you've been looking into this matter for the last two years. And I thank you for dedicating your time and talent as volunteers to the commission and looking into addressing this issue with vision and with pragmatism. And that gratitude also extends to staff. With that, I would want to uphold all your recommendation and looking into the mitigation as proposed by staff, and perhaps exploring other mitigations that can be explored into the future. I do want to focus on one statement, one bullet point in the presentation, that Woody Way is designated as a public roadway regardless of driver's origin and destinations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sals. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I do want to say thank you to Mr. McCarthy for your history and your knowledge of the neighborhood. And also to staff, the commission, and the public for all of the input. I'm a yes to following all of the recommendations of the Transportation Commission. I would request we receive regular updates on the calming measures. And perhaps, you know, receive updates on other issues that may arise in that area as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, do we have a breakdown of the traffic counts on each of the two roads? It looked to me like the traffic count was simply what was on Woody Way, and not how much was on each of the field goal roads off of Woody Way. Am I correct?
Yes, the presentation that I provided this evening just had Woody Way volumes, but I've pulled up a slide that we've used previously, again, more detail for the Transportation Commission. I'm not sure if you can see this, I can zoom in some if you're interested.
Yes, please.
We've counted everywhere in this neighborhood. Let's see, can I make this present even though it's hidden? I can. Okay, so here is your matching location, Woody Way, I've got my cursor going. And these are September of twenty-one, so this is the most recent count, is the red count. And so you can see the total, remember what I was reporting was kind of the daytime volumes, which is most of the traffic, but here's the total traffic for a twenty-four-hour period is nine hundred and seventy-one. And then you can see the volumes on Ax Handle, and I think I can zoom, I see you leaning in, so I can certainly zoom and move around.
Yes, please do.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. I pushed the right buttons even. So, here's, we'll just walk our way around. So here's Mission Timber, which is in Presidio to the north of Woody Way. So you can see about three hundred and eighty, three hundred and ninety-nine vehicles per day. This one's going to be harder, three hundred and seventy-one, south on Mission Timber. Ax Handle, very, very low volumes, because this is not the direct route to get in or out of the neighborhood. Concerns when we looked at making this a one-way loop, one way or the other, kind of split the traffic between Highland Mesa, but would put a lot of new traffic down on this loop, or there's virtually none today. You can see Ax Handle here. Where's our most recent? Our most recent is May of twenty-one, so eight hundred and eighteen, right here. Highland Mesa, just over a thousand, thousand twenty-five at this location. As you go further, it's going to get higher. So here's Highland Mesa, if you're familiar with the road, kind of across from the townhomes section. And let's see what our last count was, twenty-one, May twenty-one. Summers tend to be a little bit lower, but here's the council, what is that, about six hundred, a little more? And the May of twenty-one, eleven fifty, down here on Highland Mesa. And then the busier street is University. So you're asking for some comparisons. These are the two locations that we've consistently counted, as you can see, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. So here is, back in the neighborhood a bit, we're at about sixteen hundred vehicles a day. And as you move further out, again, it increases to twenty-four, twenty-five hundred. to 24, 2,500 vehicles per day on University Avenue. And this is the Tombaugh intersection that was referenced for traffic calming. That's where the temporary traffic calming is today. There's also temporary traffic calming, kind of on this section of University here. I jumped over speeds. Speeds were a question, and we actually do have speeds collected. These are such short segments, it's a little tricky, but you can see, I mean, average speeds of 14 and 18 miles per hour, very, very low speeds. Woody Way is similar, 17 for a 50th percentile and 20 for the 85th percentile. So, speeds are very low, so we've been focusing on, again, trying to get some better behavior here with the increased traffic control devices through this section. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Sure.
So, say today Boulder Point and Presidio came to the city at the same time, would we allow this design for traffic for a possible exit from Presidio?
Well, if we had this to do over again, and our code doesn't necessarily support lots of connections, but it does, it's very, it's fairly general in supporting connections between neighborhoods. I think things that we have learned and potential updates to our code moving forward, as we've talked about this, are, boy, it'd be better to have multiple connections, you know, every quarter mile, kind of spread the load, maybe even a connection up here if it made sense. That's what we would want today. Our code doesn't necessarily support that. Our code would probably end up with something similar. We would push each developer to provide a connection, and typically, they would provide the minimum allowable. So, we'd probably end up with something like this today. But talking with different groups of staff in preparation for this, we've all went, yeah, we need to, this is a bit of a bad spot in our code. We can do better. We know what better is now.
All right. So, I do, I so empathize with all of these residents, because each of us in this community deserves to live on a safe street and deserves to be able to enjoy the place that we live. And I see those signs all over, I've got them in my neighborhood, all over town, where people are putting up the signs saying, "Drive like your kids lived here." And I know we can't, we can't necessarily regulate behavior. I mean, we can have police, we can design our roads differently. And I guess what I wish that we could make happen is that we would all drive through each other's neighborhoods as though we lived there, and we would drive slowly, we would drive cautiously, we'd be looking out for kids and pets and people crossing streets. And so, I just want to express that I do feel such empathy for these residents and residents like them in other parts of town that have a lot of traffic on their roads. And at this point, I'm going to support what the Transportation Commission laid out, and I too would like to have an update once we have enough, once we have enough data to see what kind of impact it has had.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'll weigh in here as well. You know, I really understand how difficult this can be, especially as a parent, having this kind of traffic out your door. I mean, with three small children, at our last location, we did not let our kids go out into the front yard. And I was worried whenever shovel in my driveway while the kids were playing in the snow, just always worried about that next car that was coming down, coming down my street. The issue's here is that, you know, honestly, a lot of what Councilmember McCarthy has stated really spelled it out clearly. There's a lot of people in Pandros Pines that also bought their properties with this expectation of this route. There are a, I think that through two years of considerations of the Transportation Commission, the staff being diligently looking through this, this being in front of council multiple times to discuss, that we have found at least something that can help mitigate the situation. I think closing off that route would, we will be back again at this tomorrow then, council, with the HOA from Pandros Pines, the residents there, very upset of us closing that off. What we have to do is really mitigate it to the best of our ability. That being said, I am in support of what the Transportation Commission has put forth. I would also urge, especially now that tonight, it's already, may already be snowing, I don't know. I haven't looked outside in a while, but that we get those boulders in front of that person's home. If we're going to do it, let's just get it done. I think that seems like an easy lift to begin with, and then continue to work on the raised sidewalks and the other measures. So, thank you, everyone. I think we have consensus here for support of the Transportation Commission's proposals. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We're now down to agenda item number nine, our public participation. Do we have anyone?
Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. We're to agenda item 10, informational items, two from mayor, council, and city manager, and future agenda item requests. I will start over to my left with Councilmember Salz.
So, on Friday, December 17, come one, come all to the Sunnyside Holiday Cookie Festival. So, everyone is invited to join celebrating the spirit of the season and collective power of the community, and showcasing the diversity of our cultures and communities and cookies and bars. I am actually cosponsoring the event, as I will be baking and sharing a gluten-free food-for-the-gods bars. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays, Happy Festivus.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, and I look forward to seeing you, not next week, but the following week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything tonight. Just want to say, we're almost to the winter solstice, and the days will start getting longer soon.
Thank you. One moment here. I would like to offer to reopen agenda item number eight. Just real quick, Councilmember Aslan, I apologize, I did not see your final thoughts comment before I had closed the discussion, so I would like to reopen that so that you may speak to the Woody Way.
You know what? I don't want to beat a dead horse here. I think the direction is pretty clear going forward, and I know that a lot of that comes very strongly from the unanimous recommendation of the Transportation Commission. I appreciate their voice in this process, and I know how much that weighs on everybody's mind. So, I don't want that to be misunderstood or misconstrued. So, but thank you, Mayor. I will take just a moment to, again, just voice the grievances of the Boulder Point community in this unfortunate situation. And I did have something of substance to raise as well. I think if we're going to take parking off of Woody Way, we should do that very selectively toward the bend and the intersections where we can improve that visibility that was being discussed by the one emergency medical technician. Otherwise, I think we should allow parking in the middle of that space, at the very least, as a further mitigation measure or obstacle towards speeding and as a deterrent for people to use this as the route to tune from their commuting needs, overburdening the Boulder Point neighborhood. And I'll just leave it at this. You know, I want to leave you with the imagery, once again, of that tiny road that we're now considering removing parking from because it's too narrow to safely park cars there. One car per minute all day long, passing back and forth on that space in a zigzag, going up through Boulder Point. I just think it's completely inappropriate, and now I don't have to use my own words. The vice mayor asked a very, very fabulous question about if we were going to do this today, how would we do it? And not to put you on the spot, Mr. Baumann, but your reply was, and I quote, "It's a bad spot in our code, and we can do better." And we just closed this discussion with moving forward on recommendations to basically do nothing of substance out here. It's a very disappointing result for me. I am one of seven people, and I am one voice against a number of our illustrious Transportation Commission members who give up their time and bring us the expertise that they have to offer, and I highly respect that. But as a homeowner on a street and as a parent with children myself, I find where we're wrapping up on this to be entirely insufficient. And I also believe that we can do better. But I guess we need to leave it there. I just hope that if we're going to close parking, we don't do it all the way. We just do it towards the edges for visibility's sake, but we allow cars there as the obstacle that they offer. And that I'm also not in, I'm not in favor of enhanced signage. I don't think that does anything but blight the neighborhood. All right. Thank you very much for coming back to this topic and letting me speak. I really do deeply appreciate the gesture.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. And my apologies for not seeing that before closing it. But with that, we will move on to agenda item number 10. We will continue on, and I do believe it was maybe my turn. Yeah? Okay, let's do that. So, a few things. We had a good discussion with the Army Corps of Engineers and BNSF for Rio de Flag. We typically have, as usual, two steps forward, one step back, and I'm thankful that we're this time taking a step forward. So, I was happy to hear about that, and hopefully we'll have more information in the near future on how that's progressing. Tomorrow, we will be, the service providers in our town are coming together as a summit on Thursday, sorry, my apologies. Thank you. Thursday, to help us get a larger view, see where gaps and services may exist into our community, where the city fits into that, and how we can best provide services to our general community. And I'm very looking forward to that day-long retreat and see what we can do. Aside from that, those are the major updates. Let me just see, checking what else I might have. Aside from that, I think that's the main things I wanted to mention here. So, I will pass the torch on to Vice Mayor.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shumani?
Nothing. No, I'm just kidding. I had to. Just a couple of quick things, just a couple of quick updates. Last week, we had some snow, very little bit of snow, but in our plowing operations, the bike lane on Butler got hit pretty hard by one of our plows. And I'm very proud to say that our team at the city, our streets director, Sam Beckett, and public works director, Scott Overton, are on it. Their team is on it. They've been looking at it. They're researching it. They're looking for solutions, and they're ready for Wednesday's snow, which is tomorrow. And I actually will be likely joining Sam Beckett in a plow for a ride-along tomorrow to witness how that plow operation works, or doesn't work, but I'm hoping does work. And to our community, just stay patient with us. We're working through the kinks. We're going to find ways to make this work, and I think we'll get there hopefully sooner than later. And just gratitude to Sam and his team and our plow drivers and our streets operators. You all rock, and we appreciate you. I had a good meeting with President Cruz yesterday, and we discussed housing on campus. We discussed minimum wage. We discussed a whole range of topics, and I am just beyond excited about him and his position for NAU. I'm excited for NAU's future and the community's future, and specifically our town and gown relationships. I also brought up with President Cruz a desire to figure out a path between campus and town for pedestrians and cyclists, and it might look like something like taking a lane from Beaver. And he's very interested in pursuing that with me in this next year of my time left. So, I know that NAU's played a huge role in our history of bike planning, so glad to be partnering with NAU on that as well, along with these other topics. As the mayor mentioned, there's a discussion about resources and needs in our community on Thursday, and I'm just grateful for staff leadership and some of us on council's participation, along with the committee who helped us set that up. And I think those were all my points. Wishing everybody a happy holidays and a safe one, and thank you all for all of your hard work and dedication to the city. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan?
I'll pass.
All right. With that, thank you, everyone, for tonight. Please stay safe on the roads this evening and tomorrow morning, and I look forward to seeing you here in a couple weeks. Happy holidays.